...Commissioner, and I'll be presiding over the hearing today. And what this is, and we're gonna go around and introduce ourselves in a second. This is what we call a show and tell. The applicant is gonna show us what the project looks like and what they're proposing to do. And if there's neighbors here, and I'll find out in a second, they'll be showing us where they live, and possibly will even go to where they live and whatnot, depending upon what they would like us to do. Okay? So I'm gonna start, I'm gonna move you over here. We're gonna start with Rod. We'll go around this way introducing ourselves.
I'm McLean, Commissioner.
Suzanne Butterfield, Commissioner from Stockbridge.
Linda Madison, the Coordinator.
Karen Holby, I'm Paul Ray, the landlord.
Anna Rae, I'm the manager.
I'm Brian Lane Kornis, I'm the Civil Engineer for the project.
I'm Michael Penrod, Resident.
Brooke Dingeldine.
Steve Roy, Women of the Arctic's.
Tom Apple, Owner's Representative.
Dylan Kelly, Scottsburg, the Herald.
Lynda LaFrance, property of Joining.
Roger Shabad, I lived back there.
Paul Ray, I'm one of the owners of the hotel project.
Paul Kendall, and I've led the RQ process of reviewing downtown hotel options.
Greg Bobo, I'm the General Counsel of the National Resources Board.
Pete Fellows, Turin Resonant Beach Regional Commission.
Ari Rockman-Miller, Agency of Aeroculture.
Okay, well, I think I'm turning it over to you now to show us around.
Great. So, as everyone is probably aware, the project is a hotel, restaurant, and conference center. Seventy-nine year hotel, 152-seat restaurant, and 400-seat capacity conference center. So generally, the buildings are arranged in sort of an L shape, and so we've staked out some things on the site to just sort of help people get a sense of what's happening here. So the stakes with the pink flaggings are sort of rough corners of buildings. In order to make it a little easier to understand, we sort of just turn them both into wrecked handles, which is not really how they're configured, but it's giving a sense of where they are. So, the hotel, you can see over there, the two big flags are the, what is that? The West End of the Hotel.
Is there a way to get up there?
Yeah.
Let's go up there. Do you have anyone a little bigger than that?
This is what I have for the site visit. With all the rain stuff today, I wasn't sure what we were gonna be able to do, but I'm happy to hand this around if anybody wants to look once we get over here. Over here are the West End of the Hotel, and then that flag and that flag here, to my right, are the East End of the Hotel building. And then further to the east, the two flags that sort of go closer to the trees there are the end of the conference center and restaurant, and then there's two pink flags over there, up at the other end of the conference center and the restaurant. The orange stakes that are sort of further out are generally the edges of the various parking areas and whatnot. There's also a couple of orange stakes by those large trees over there, which are the sort of back edge of the grass tent and event area that goes in that corner of the site. And see...
Can we get over into that tent area? Or is it gonna be measurable?
It's just gonna be like this here side.
I mean, everybody will got wet feet, but we can go over there.
That's okay, let's go.
Yep.
The West End of it, and that one that was by that birch tree there.
Oh, way over there.
Yeah.
Right, yellow branch.
You guys have really taken to heart this concept of, you're cutting these trees down, but you don't cut down... It's hard just to read this stuff, is what I'm trying to get at, there's no paper. So these trees here will be removed?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yep, because they're interfering with the slope. So generally, the earthwork for the site, because of the slope, the native slope of the site, earth is generally getting moved from this corner over here to that corner down there, to sort of get everything to flatten out to where it's developable. So this is the area where there'll be the most removal of earth. And then over down in that, when you get down over by where like the stormwater system is in that end of the site, is where there's most placement of earth is gonna be. So this area is actually gonna be ten to twelve... What's that?
How much are you cutting?
It's gonna be about ten to twelve feet of cut in this area, so it'll be quite a bit lower than where we are now.
This is your mitigation land up here?
Yep. So generally, this portion of the site, back into here, is the mitigation. And I have exhibits and things we can look at when we get back to the hearing. So this large field here is split between the project owners and the France, the butter...
Yeah, that's my, I'm the owner of half of that field and the hillside up there, so I've been paying taxes for 35 years, planning to build a home up there. Interviewed in New Hampshire yesterday, so the home, I would love to build a home up there. I would not like to be looking out over the hotel. So, you'll hear my stuff.
Where does your land start exactly? I see, I see a grassy area there.
So the grassy area is one part of it, and then five acres of this bigger field here would be the other side of it. So like where that draw is? Yeah, roughly, I don't know, you guys have staked it out, I think, more recently to know exactly where the market lines are, but roughly.
I'm not sure where you were.
Yeah.
I could go walk over to that market.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Those were shorts?
He's going over to the property lines, so we can see where I was.
Good climbers.
Yeah, right? They've been there a while.
How'd you go first?
Yeah.
Been there a long while.
Well, while he's doing that, what kind of, what's the story on the trees in front here? What's getting cut down there?
So there will be some tree cutting in the front, just in order to have a little more of the road.
There he is.
So everything behind him is yours, though?
And as to the mitigation land, could you show a little more of the scope, because that field there, and it heads towards the woods?
Yep, yep, this field here, and then yeah, it comes in sort of behind the hotel and up into this wooded area on the hill where they're at. Yep. I'm sorry, you were asking to put something?
Well, we can do it when we go back up.
Oh, yeah, I think we can see relatively well, so the proposed tree cutting is, well, you can sort of see, there's a stake, you can see where the tree line sort of comes in and turns this way. So there's a stake with a little bit of flagging that goes up into a tree right there at the turn.
Yep.
So the clearing would start there, and then you don't think, there's a stake on the other end of it, which you can't see because of all the cars, but, so just along the frontage here, but outside of the wetland buffer, and then to the edge of the stream buffer, is about where we're gonna clear along the roadway.
Opening up what we drove through.
Yeah, I could ask you to repeat that down when we get back to the cars.
Sure. And then, not, I think that wouldn't be bad to look at from back here, is if you look that way, you can see the two orange stakes closest to the tree are the back of the parking area that's behind the hotel. So that'll be kind of, there's a little bit of grading back there, but not much, but that's pretty much the limit of the development, essentially, that'll serve the fields for this mention.
Did I ever correct that some of the mitigation land is actually where it's...
Something I don't care.
Neighbor?
I don't understand what you're doing there.
Who else do we have here? You're up.
I'm right in, yeah. Right back behind where the stakes are, about, I don't know, under yards or so.
Do you want us to walk down? Can we see up in there? Well, we can walk back this way anyway, let's walk back that way. Is the owner of that home there, or?
They're not.
They're not? Okay. All right, well, let's swing that way, then.
I'm kinda late. I'm gonna go to the typical school dinner here.
Yeah. So, why doesn't that have the name "Wilt"? I'll ask you at the hearing, but, but that's over that way, then.
It's the surface water, so the surface water, social protection area, it's generally bigger water area, groundwater area.
Okay, it's a good creek in there. Okay, good. All right, so right up in that area.
Yeah, right where... I'll work through the house. I'd say 100 yards, so up there, 100 yards. Property line's a little way up.
What cutting, what cutting is proposed here?
No, the tree line will be as you see it today, close to Altman.
Is there any other, like, sound mitigation or anything else planned?
No, we can talk about sound more when we get to the hearing, but generally, the hotel is the least impactful part of the site for sound, and so that's part of the reason why it's located in this portion of the site. But while we're here, it might be good to get it in mind that where the event site is, we try to, in laying out the site, keep it away as far as possible from any of the existing residents, but also you have to imagine that 10-foot drop, continent, there'll be a bit of a surround on it in addition to the, in addition to the trees.
I assume those trees will stay?
Yes.
Look at the independent living from there. Yeah, and then the nursing homes.
Looks nice and warm.
And drawing.
Sound carries here.
Does anyone else wanna point out anything here, at this point?
Did you hear the interstate too, just one?
Yeah.
Sure.
So is this all kind of level?
During the winter time.
Yeah, it's more or less level, I mean, you can kind of see how long the building is, so pink stakes are the ends of the building, so from there down to there. So essentially, all around the hotel is more or less flat.
Well, let's go back to the entrance, and you can point out those trees a little bit more. Do you have a landscaping architect here today, or?
The landscaping architect's not here, but we can discuss the landscaping.
Okay, good. And you have a little bit bigger blow-up of that, I trust? Bigger than that, right?
Yeah, well, we're... Cars are, and then, look this way. In the, in the corner of the trees, you can see that flagging that's kind of tied to a branch there. So in both of these, they sort of, like, it's cut in towards the road still, so it's not like a straight cut back towards the road. This one is following the edge of the wetland buffer, and then this one is following the edge of the stream buffer, so it sort of curves around a little bit. But those are the limits, as they exist on the human side of the tree line.
Let's go over the stream.
Well, I just wanted to point this section out, because there's a fair number of maps and things that show this area as perennial steam, just what's coming down the road right here. So this is the area that when the kitchen file just, Brett, I've lost his last name, came out, just determined that this is not a perennial stream here. So it comes down from the wetland area, comes to this culvert and this head wall, goes across the road, is in a, I'm not sure what it looks like on the US of the road, to be honest with you, but that was also not considered perennial stream, until it crosses the road again down by that garden right back under the property. So we can go, what?
Go back to the green.
Right down by the green sign?
Yeah. On the green side.
It's just, it's maybe, if you pass through that garden, we'll go look at it in a second.
I'm going on the road.
I can run down through it.
Or you, if you go, if you go up, if you go, if you go up...
Just here on that side.
From that before, now?
Yeah. I'll show you in a second, so I'll come out and see other things. But I just wanted to get the hearing that this one, that 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 one, that[997.82]
You need to come to the hearing.
I'm gonna be at the hearing. I just want, it's easier to visualize us here. The proximity of where it is that my property does the, you know, when you're standing up there where the hotel was, I pointed up and the moat area, the green area up there is a beautiful house site, um, detect, you know, whatever. But, um, you know, the value of that, looking out over a hotel is different than looking out.
Well, as I say, we will address all those issues and you'll wanna...
It's for value.
Be under criteria, eight, that'll be what you'll wanna... And I think we've seen it, we can, um, I don't know if we'd go from here, but we could drive around and look, I can't think, you can't talk to your dudes.
Yeah, yeah.
I think things are socked in, but I think we know they'll do it pretty well.
Taylor, um, I only heard about this yesterday and another number of people who couldn't be here today. So in terms of the hearing that is about to convene, is that the only opportunity people would have to participate and ultimately ask for intervention in this, or have interventions that have been already passed? If you could just see this procedurally where we're at?
Yes, pretty much.
Well, yes, for which one of those?
Yeah, they need to be here today. A notice went out, it was noted in the Mountain News and the Randolph paper did a story on it just last Thursday, so I don't see how they could've missed it, but, and nobody called me.
No, no, and I'm not, I was just trying to, uh, establish...
You could represent them if you wanted.
I have my own day of events that I've already done. But just so that, for example, the neighbor understands that she needs to speak and articulate her issues at the hearing, the staff, or the morning and afternoon.
You take good care of that.
Yeah, 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 yeah. The commission listens quite carefully to what the neighbors' concerns are.
And then in terms of obtaining intervention or interested party status, is that something that needs to be filed by motion after today?
They can go today at the hearing.
After participating, or?
Today at the hearing.
Verbally, they'll probably do it. Verbally is okay, you don't require a written, um, motion.
But only today?
Yeah.
Oh, you can't make it today?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Okay, well, let's head on down to, uh, downtown. Yeah, very good.
Or you could ask that question, and you can ask that question in the ghetto.
Morning. Here we go. So we've just returned from a site visit, uh, of the proposed hotel and convention center, and we will now start the public hearing. Uh, this is Friday, October 4th, 2019, and we are the District III Environmental Commission meeting at the Randolph Town Office. The application is seeking to construct an operatable property. No, it's not. That foot's on my script.
Oh.
I had to bring that.
You did that.
Just joking. The application is seeking to construct, that's just a little inside joke, um, two buildings, a seventy-nine-room hotel, three stories, forty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-five feet gross square feet, and an adjacent one-hundred-and-fifty-two-seat restaurant, um, four-hundred-seat convention center, fourteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine square feet, with associated dry, parking, stormwater treatment, utilities, landscaping, and outdoor event space. The project is located on twenty-five-point-nine acre parcel of land off Route sixty-six, just uphill from Exit Four, I-89 across from the park and ride. So I'm Tim Taylor, and I'm from Thetford, uh, in Post Mills, and I'm Chair of the Commission, and I'll be presiding over the hearing. And to my right is Suzanne Butterfield, and she's from Stockbridge, and she's one of the commissioners. And to my left is Rob McClain, he's from South Stratford, not Stratford, South Stratford. And then further down is Linda Matson, and she is our coordinator, and all communications go to her, um, whether they're in writing, um, or email, you know, whatever, you talk with her, and, uh, she will give you the answers that you need. So what I'd like to do is start right here, and we'll do our introductions again going around the room, and, uh, and you might just mention, you know, who you are relative to, we don't need a big speech or anything, just who you are relative to the proceedings today. Thank you.
I'm Steve Roy with Weenie Lampier Architects, project architect for buildings.
Paul Ray, I'm one of the owners of the project.
Tom Apple, I'm the owner's representative.
Brian Lane-Carniss, I'm the civil engineer for the project.
Linda LaFrance, I'm joining, I'm the owner.
Sir?
Oh, okay.
You're in that row.
My name's John Kelly, I'm Scott of the Harold.
Okay, thank you.
Dave Rubin from the National Technical College.
Anna Rice, Paul's wife.
Karen Holby, Paul's wife.
Joan Sax, landowner, in Randolph Center.
Nancy Rice, landowner, Randolph Center.
Brooke Dingeldean, I'm an attorney who is entering my appearance today for Joan and for Nancy, as well as Exit Four Open Space.
Greg Bobo with the Natural Resources Board.
Jen Mojo with the Agency of Natural Resources.
Dwayne Shabat, property owner, Jason.
Paul Kendall, member of the Randolph Regional Reenergized Ask Question.
Could you just explain what that is?
Sure. Um, about two years ago, uh, Paul Castello and the Royal Vermont Group, uh, initiated a process here, in a, in a, a process in town here, uh, to have the general public participate in a series of conversations and discussions around ways to re-energize the, uh, the local region. Uh, and it covered quite a spectrum, uh, of interests and activities, everything from parks, uh, to the culture and arts, to the energy conservation, to, uh, local redevelopment and so forth. Uh, and then we broke into, uh, four different task courses to pursue a number of specific suggestions that had, and concerns that had been raised through the, uh, public, uh, hearings and discussions that we had held. Uh, one of those issues, uh, had to do with this hotel and its relationship to, uh, a concern that people had about having a downtown hotel facility. And it was in that regard that, that I participated, uh, in review of that aspect of the community's concern. Okay, thank you.
Kinda like an ad hoc DRB?
That's right, exactly, yeah.
I'm Michael Penrod, I'm a chairman resident.
Pete fellows, two erudits, on a regional commission.
Damian DiNicolà, I'm, uh, one of the co-chairs of the Randolph Regional Reenergized Economic Development Committee and Tourism Committee, which Paul Kendall just did a great job of explaining.
Okay, thank you.
Dan DeVoe, I'm the landowner, also a member of the Randolph, uh, DRB.
You're on the DRB?
Yes, not here in any of your official, or passing, but...
Hi, Ari Rockman Miller, Agency of Air, Culture, Food, and Markets.
Okay, well, thank you. Um, so, um, in just a second, the applicant will give us a general overview of the project, and then we'll, but I first wanted to just give you a little explanation about the process and how it works for some of you who aren't real familiar with this. So, uh, we're here in quasi-judicial capacity to collect evidence to see if this application meets the standards of our law, Act Two-Fifty, and as you've seen with the green sheet going around, there's quite a few criteria, uh, some of which will be, uh, of concern today and some of which won't. Um, and we'll address those of concern today. And, uh, so, there, the, we may need additional information at some point, which we can ask for, uh, but this is the start of the process. Um, I should say, really, the start of the process was when they filed their application and when our coordinator looked it over to see if it was complete or not, and, uh, so if you want to participate in this process, um, there's a couple of good reasons for you to wanna participate. Um, you get to, if you are deemed a party, then you get to introduce evidence, you get to cross-examine the parties, uh, the applicant, uh, whatnot, um, and, uh, you can testify yourselves. And then if you're not happy with our decision, um, you have the, uh, because you have a party status, then you can appeal it to the environmental court, where guess what? Starts all over again, from scratch, as if we didn't exist. Well, maybe we existed a little bit, but by and large, as if we didn't exist, despite all our efforts. Um, you can note a little frustration there, but that's the way the law reads. So anyhow, um, so it's pretty important, um, if you want to participate today, to do that. Now, there's two types of parties that you should understand. There's what's called statutory parties, and, um, this is decided by the legislature, and those are parties, uh, by right, and they have an absolute right to participate, and that includes all the state agencies, that includes the Town Planning Commission, includes the Regional Planning Commission, um, obviously the applicant and whatnot. Uh, then there's the rest of us, and I say "rest of us" because we are just citizens like, uh, many of you landowners, and, uh, we have to show that we have a particularized interest that's above and beyond the, the general community, um, and that this affects us in some way. Um, and so that's what we will be doing now, is to, um, go be granting what's called preliminary party status, and after the applicant gives us this little overview, you will have an opportunity to say who you are once again and address those issues that you wanna have, um, and say why you should be considered to be a party on a preliminary basis. If you can't be and don't wanna be a party and, and appeal, you can still help us out as a friend of the commission, and that doesn't allow you to go ahead forward and appeal our decision, but it does help, uh, allow you to participate in some capacity for us. So, um, with that being said, uh, would you like to give us just a quick, brief, overall, I think many of us were at the site visit, which I should add, everything we mentioned and did at the site visit needs to be put on before, once we convene the hearing, as we go through it, we need to get what we talked about at the site visit on, uh, the record.
I think what we'd like to do is start out with the sites, it's fresh in everybody's mind, and I think most of the concern is gonna be the site, so Brian can give us a quick overview of that and point out some of the things that we talked about.
And we haven't convened a hearing yet, so, um, we really just wanna get the rough idea of what it is you're doing, pretty much what I've just spoken to in introducing you, and then we'll turn to the neighbors and whatnot, uh, to give that, to give party status, so...
Great. Um, so, in case anyone wasn't at the site visit, uh, this is just a sort of vicinity map, um, showing, here's Route Eighty-Nine, uh, here's the VTран's Park and Ride, uh, this is the former, uh, Vermont Pure facility here. Um, this is the open field area where the proposed project will be located, um, so the other landowners are here, 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 and here. Um, this, uh, right here, and you can see, this, this minus photo has taken the differed, uh, independent facilities under construction, so that's this sort of white building here, um, Route Sixty-Six runs left to right, and Randolph Center is located over here. So that's a general overview of the, the project location. Um, here's an overall site plan, um, that shows the majority of the project property, um, so property lines are run along here. Um, there's a portion of the property over here that isn't shown, but we're not proposing to do, uh, anything, uh, on the west side of Oak Ridge Lane. So, uh, this is the entrance, which is, uh, you can sort of see right here is the existing, uh, farm drive that we were, all came up at the site visit. Um, this building is the proposed hotel, uh, this building is the restaurant and conference center, um, this is the tent and event area, which is in the grass, um, there's a few other small outbuildings, there's a gazebo, um, and a utility building here, um, and so parking is, uh, there's a parking field in front, and to the west and south of the building, and then one to the east of the, um, restaurant and conference center, and stormwater treatment will be over here in the north west portion of the site.
That's a real brief one. Yep, no, that's good, I think that's good. Uh, well, let's start with, um, well, the first one on my list here is Linda LaFrance, and, um, you have written down here you would...
To write, yeah. Brooke needs to leave by ten-thirty, so she's...
Okay, well, I just, uh, we'll, should, take just a second here, I'm just taking them in order, so I don't have to mix stuff here. Um, you have, um, my understanding is you live up on the hillside, right?
That is correct.
You showed us the hillside, um, and you'd like to have, um, your criteria of interest is three, seven, eight, and nine. Um, well, seven has already been taken care of, um, at the town level, so we won't be doing seven. Um, eight and nine are definitely of interest to you, from what I can see, and I'm not sure why necessarily three would be, um, being uphill, um, I believe that's, um, water. But, um, is there any objection to granting, um, granting party status to her on those? Do you have any objection to that?
I have no objection.
Which nine?
Yeah, do you know which nine you were referencing? We will be discussing Nine B, which is prime agricultural soils.
Yeah, okay, that's, there's probably a couple, um, um, some, some is A as well, I think.
Okay.
What it'll bring to the community of Randolph Center.
Something to watch. The general public. That's more the general public issue.
Yeah, yeah. Um, well, we can talk some about that. Good, all right, thank you. Would you like me to do next?
Hi, Mr. Taylor. Joan Sax and Nancy Rice are individuals that seek party status in this matter, and I am here, uh, representing them for purposes of today, um, and will notify the commission if I will be continuing to represent them. And, uh, I am also, uh, here today entering my parents on behalf of Exit Four Open Space, who, um, similarly, we will notify you if I will continue to represent their interests or if they will remain, uh, as an interested party, if they receive party status. Um, Joan, can you describe, uh, where you're located in terms of your property?
I'm located on, at four-one-four-two Vermont Route Sixty-Six, which is at the top of the hill. Um, my property abuts the cemetery and, uh, BTC.
Can you point out which one that is?
It's not, it's, it's a little part to the, to the right. It's not on that map.
Oh, it's not on this map?
No.
It's probably a couple miles away, a mile?
It's about a mile and a half.
Mile and a half away.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and how do you feel?
Well, my main interest, I mean, I, I will be affected by terms of, uh, traffic and so forth, that's a narrow road, I don't know if it will require to be widened or something because it's a narrower road on a curve.
So you drive by there?
Pardon?
You're saying you drive...
I drive by there all the time, but my actually, my main interest, I mean, is far more fundamental, it's water. Um, the aquifer, I was part of a, um, Water First group that was concerned about Vermont Pure, as a matter of fact, taking a lot of water from our land, and my understanding is that the water that is sucked out of the ground for the, uh, for the project, nineteen thousand gallons a day was what was put in the paper last week, um, leaves the aquifer forever, it goes down the sewage and down to the sewage treatment plant, goes out to the river and down to the sea, it does not come back to, uh, to Randolph Center. And Randolph Center has had three large water-using projects built within the last five years, a nursing home, which is a big user of water, a, uh, an independent living, and a state lab. And I am concerned that my well will be drained from all of this. It's just, just, you know, it's gonna be the straw that breaks the camel's back, so I'm, I'm concerned about that most of all.
All right, thank you.
Yes, I, yeah, I mean, I'm also concerned about light pollution and so forth, but more fundamentally, the most fundamental thing is water. Um, and Randolph has not had a, a...
Well, I, I understand your concern, we'll get into the details of that and that criteria during the hearing, and I think I understand, you know, why you want party status there, so, um, that's good at this point.
So, just in summary, she's asking for, uh, standing on three, five, um, and eight. Nancy, could you describe, um, to, to the commission where you're located?
Um, I'm on South Randolph Road, five-thirty-nine South Randolph Road, just past BTC Orchard, on the same side, and we have a well, and I'm concerned about the quantity of water available in the future, uh, for the same reasons Joan was just speaking of, and I remember years ago when BTC was putting a swimming pool in, adjoining BTC, um, someone came around and pulled the pump out of our well when we weren't home to check the water, and we had not given them permission. It's odd now that on something far bigger than that, we're not consulted, I mean, I'm not adjoining that, but Linda is, and our, our aquifer is underneath there, and I understand there's a large quantity of water that has been found with the second well, but I'm wondering how that affects the water supply for Randolph Center and people with wells around there. I also think that the road pass there is potentially dangerous. Um, I often go down that road, and it just seems like it's not, not appropriate.
So, if I, if I understand correctly, you're off the map as well?
On what?
You're not located on this map either.
Right, you go, you turn at the churches and you go down half a mile.
Okay.
So I'm taking a guess that it's about a mile as the crow flies.
Turn at the churches, um, I'm not as...
Sort of at the bottom level.
I knew we're BTC.
Because where you see it cutting off around the...
Yeah.
Right there. Right here.
It's a half a mile.
I live on the South Randolph Road myself.
Downhill.
Okay. All right, thank you. So you're asking for, is that correct, three, five, and eight, is that the country, correct?
Yes, that is correct. And then lastly, um, on behalf of Exit Four, as you may recall, uh, it was a grassroots citizens group that coalesced, um, for the Exit Four proposal by Mr. Samus a few years ago, um, to turn that into, uh, a variety of things, but, um, you may recall that Mr. Samus and, um, Exit Four and others reached an agreement so that the property was able to be conserved, um, by, um, the Hoopers, as well as by Exit Four raising a million dollars to be able to acquire the twenty-two acre portion that was of most concern, which is right across from, uh, McDonald's. And as you may have noticed, driving into town, we now have the amazing, um, Jim Sardonis' new whale dance, um, figures there. I have not come home from a, from one day in Barry, where my office is, without seeing a number of people at that location, taking pictures for a yearbook and enjoying those amazing whale tails. That is conserved land now, and, um, there are a number of people within Exit Four who are very concerned about light pollution from this, um, proposal, particularly because it exceeded, it exceeds the height restriction in the zoning, um, in the zoning ordinance. I understand that there is some sort of waiver that was imposed that allowed them to go higher, but if it's higher, there's more potential for light pollution, so there is a concern on number eight, and they would seek party status, um, because they think the interest in ensuring that those amazing views, uh, remain able to be, um, enjoyed, and that the area does not, um, is not burdened by undue adverse air, um, light during the night sky is very important to those folks. In addition, they are also concerned, uh, for the traffic in the areas, many of them travel daily back and forth, um, and wanna ensure that there are conditions that are protective of the traveling public, and there are also a number of folks that similarly have, uh, wells in the area, so to ensure there's no undue adverse impact to the existing water supplies, so they would seek that party set, status for Exit Four Open Space on three, five, and eight.
Um, are there objections from you all at this point, or any who you wanted to comment on or talk about with respect to?
Did I just mention something? They weren't at the local DRB hearing.
Well, that's...
And they're just sort of showing up now, nobody has spoken to me.
Yeah.
Excuse me, I wasn't.
You were, yes, but not the open space group.
And I did speak about the same issue.
Yes, I'm talking about open space that she just discussed.
So, Brooke, you intend to leave though, right? So who's gonna be here to participate for Exit Four?
Um, I was notified, as I told you at the site visit yesterday about this, so are you only holding one hearing on this map?
I don't, I don't know, but, um, I mean, we, we, this has been properly noticed and whatnot.
Yeah, I don't wanna get into a debate about that, I have an eleven o'clock appointment, and I can come back and try to participate as best I can on their behalf.
Well, I mean, um, I, I hadn't expected Exit Four here either, and, um, we will need to do some research on this because, um, as you probably well know, a party status for a group has, the latitude for that has been narrowed, and you need to have participants and individuals and individual names that are part of that group, and they need to be represented and be here, I believe, and, uh, so, I'm not sure, you know, who is part of that group who is here today, um, to participate. Are any of the neighbors members of that group?
Well, you're, I think you're getting a little ahead of yourself because...
Well, you're asking for preliminary party status, and one of the issues in that is participation usually in order to get final party status, so...
Okay, but we're dealing with preliminary, it's a request, I think you're, it's incumbent upon you to determine in first instance, A, is there an objection to it, before, uh, you're, we're not at the hearing yet, and just make your determination, if you're going to deny, um, a group to have party status, um, Nancy and Joan are members of Exit Four, but they are also here representing their own personal interests.
Okay, so that's what I'm trying to get, get an understanding of, is are there members of Exit Four here today?
Yes, there are. So whether I come or go, and then back later, I will try to help the best that I can. Uh, but that shouldn't have anything to do with your determination as to whether or not they should, um, have party status or not. Whether they then participate is sort of a second step, and if they are granted preliminary party status and then fail to participate, uh, in questioning, I don't think there's any obligation that they cross-examine people or even that they present evidence. They can make legal argument, they, there is no laundry list of requirements that they do, that they, giving proposed findings or any of the other aspects of representation.
Okay, I don't mean to cut you off, but we have members from Exit Four here, that's what I need to find out. Um, that's good, are there, did you, um, do we have other folks?
Can we just go, go back? So we didn't really get a chance to respond.
No, no, we'll, we'll, I wanna gather everybody here and then we'll let you think about this for a while. Um, sir, um, you, did you, uh, let's see, you're Miss?
Dwayne Shabat.
Yeah.
Are you part of the Exit Four group?
Uh, I really didn't know about the group too much, so no, not yet.
Okay, so, but you're asking for party status on five, three, five, and eight, and...
Yes.
And if I understand correctly, let's try to point, yeah, my house is right there, so you're in a butter.
Yes.
So, that's really all I need from you. And, um, I will, for the record, point out that he's in a butter, uh, he's a little uphill from the project, the project affects him from behind, he's relatively near the...
In my road goes, I decided.
Yeah, yeah, this is the, the private road, shit right away.
There's one there.
Yep. Okay. Um, do we have any other neighbors here that I've, um, I see Dan DeVoe, um, it says resident, okay, you don't have any criteria down.
It's DRB.
Yeah, DRB, yep. Have I covered everybody then that wants party status as, uh, with a particularized interest? Okay, well, we're gonna listen to you folks, say what you wanna say about that.
Relative party status?
Yeah, relative party status.
So, I'm, uh, I'm not claiming to make a decision for the owners about whether they object or not, but, uh, I, I'm not sure particularly for the two ladies from Randolph Center who live more than a mile away from the project, whether that really demonstrates particularized interests on the traffic, which they'll have more impact than anyone else in the general public who drives by the site. Um, water supply, um, whereas there's, uh, you know, a significant process from the state to, uh, ensure that the proposed water supply won't be, uh, unduly affecting, uh, adjacent water supplies, and the, based on the amount of withdrawal that's proposed for the hotel, the radius of investigation for interference into, uh, other water... for interference into other water supplies from the proposed water supply for the hotel and the rest of the project is 2,000 feet. So we've notified everyone within that 2,000 foot.
Good, let's hold all that for when we discuss that criteria, okay?
And then on the Exit Four group, I'm less familiar with how things work in terms of getting party status for a group, but I'm curious to hear how we establish who is or isn't a member of the group and who is authorized to represent the group as a whole in this discussion.
Yeah. I would, our general counsel, you can come out at the recess with us, can't you? Good, I thought so. We'll avail ourselves of having a general counsel here. So you understand he's, he may want to introduce himself better than I would, but he's our chief legal expert for the Natural Resources Board, and when we have legal issues or questions, we turn to him for his real understanding of law. So we will, unless you have something else?
I think they're just, because I'm a little shocked that open space would show up when they haven't been involved at all. No one's contacted me or, first, we've heard about it this morning.
Yeah.
And it's a little disheartening, to be honest.
We're going to recess and go discuss this, and if the general counsel wants to come with us, that'd be great.
Mr. Taylor, can I just say one other thing on behalf of the entry of Exit Four? Because this is, I just want the applicant to know that the people are concerned about some particular issues. This isn't some kind of gauntlet that's being thrown to try to create difficulty for the applicant or to try to, you know, cause this, this project to be denied. These are just issues that we want to ensure are taken care of if there are wells in the area that may be at risk, like the Pike quarries, the Pike quarry in Williamstown. One of the resolutions there was to promise to drill a well deeper and to ensure that the water supply did not, was not diminished.
Well, I think we understand that.
Well, I understand this is last minute in terms of any informal conversations previously. We just want to ensure that the folks that are, do have a particularized interest are protected through the process.
Okay, thank you. Shortly. Again, here. Let's see, so Joan Sax.
Yes.
We are granting party status, preliminary party status on three, five, eight, and eight. Nancy Rice on three, five, and eight. Linda LaFrance on three, five, and why, no, she was eight, for sure. And nine B, which we'll be discussing anyway, we have to discuss that ourselves. Wayne?
Yeah.
DeVoe, three, five, and eight, and Exit Four open space on three, five, and eight. Now, just understand this is preliminary party status. I should mention that were we not to do this, they could take an immediate appeal from our decision. So it's better, usually from an applicant's point of view, like Heather said, which is good, because it's an open forum.
We think we can magically address their concerns.
Good. So now I give an oath to you all whom might be testifying, and do you solemnly affirm the evidence that you shall give relative to the cause, now under consideration shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth under the pains and penalties of perjury? Okay, thank you. The hearing is now convened. The application was originally submitted on August 30th, 2019. The application documents and any documents submitted since then have been posted on the public database, and if you need help locating that database, then there's more than Linda to help you through that. We've reviewed the application and determined that we will take evidence, and it is expanded on basically one. We'll be taking evidence from on one A, two, and three, headwaters, water supplies, one E streams, one G wetlands, and then three, I mentioned three already, water source and wells. Five, traffic, safety, and eight, aesthetics, and nine B, prime agricultural soils, and then 10 insofar as it relates to the regional commission. In Randolph, they are in what we call an Act 250 town, I guess you would say, and criteria, I believe it's six, seven...
And 10.
And 10, as it relates to the town, have been already litigated in effect. Okay. So what we do now is we're going to let the applicant go ahead and proceed. We're going to direct ourselves, in case Jen has to leave early, she doesn't, but we'll start down in the ones anyway, because that's simpler, and then we might actually jump up to the eights, up to eight, but we can pretty much proceed as you all want to do, that's fine. So what happens is they give their presentation, we'll be speaking to the particular criteria as we go along, and we'll be addressing them, and then we'll offer you an opportunity to address them too as well, okay? So now we're on the record.
Thank you.
Finally.
So if we could pick up on the site and just real quickly go through that, we'd like to present that material to you. And then the building elevations so that people can begin to visualize the massing and so forth of what we're proposing, and keep it to that, and then go on in with the criteria. We've got, we certainly have plenty of other materials to, that we can bring up when we get your questions and the public's questions.
Okay.
Okay, so, do you have anything else to finish up on?
I mean, I think we have covered the site relatively well. One thing I did want to mention was relative to the site is that the stakes we were looking at for the tree clearing were located here and here. So I was trying to describe there that the angle of the end of clearing angles in as it goes over towards the road. So visually from the road, the amount of tree clearing would be a bit less than what it looks like from the inside of the site, because these two areas are, you know, angled towards the road.
So just if I get that, so we're talking about on the entryway to the left and to the right?
Yep, yep, so the, this sort of dark line here is the limit of tree clearing in those areas, and so the stake we're looking at is here, and then here is the culvert and where it comes across Route 66, so that it's angled in, I want roughly 45 degrees to the front of the tree line, both on the left and the right of the driveway.
Okay, Jen, given the state and whatnot, I'll give a little special treat here. So if you need to pipe up and ask questions, please do, okay? Thank you.
Otherwise, unless there's any specific questions about the layout of the site at this time, we can move on to that.
Where's the drill well at?
The, the drill well that we're going to serve the project from is located roughly there along the tree line. So there was, we did see there's a second drill well back at this end of the site, that well didn't have adequate capacity. So we had done that one first at the south end of the site, and as Paul was mentioning at the site walkthrough, the first well, we had a driller's yield of 12 gallons per minute, which was inadequate to serve the needs of development. So we drilled the second well, which isn't unusual when you're doing exploratory well drilling to support a public water system. The second well has a driller's yield of 150 gallons a minute, which is about five times the rate that we need to support the project. So only the, only the second well at the north end of the site here, we are going to propose to use to serve the potable water needs of the project.
Is that what you would call a true artesian?
So they're both artesian wells. Really, all artesian means is that the aquifer that you're using is pressurized, and so if you picture this sort of, you've seen the sort of U-tube, it's like a U-shaped glass tube, and the water level goes evenly. So if there's pressure down in the watershed, water aquifer, it just, the water level rises up to equal out the amount of pressure that's in there. It isn't really particularly indicative of the amount of water we can withdraw from the well, whether the well happens to be in an artesian aquifer or not. It's more indicative of the fact that there's a restrictive layer that water can't move through between the surface and the aquifer that you're actually withdrawing waterfront.
We'll get into that a little more later. Okay, so is that...
That's generally the site, and like I said, unless there are specific questions on the layout, the general layout of the site, we can move on to the building design.
Okay, let's do that for now.
Steve, do you want to go to the sketch-up model first, or?
Yeah, the bottom left corner. If you want to flip through the slides, I can.
Yeah, absolutely.
So this is an image essentially from the point where Brian was standing earlier with the red flag at the bottom of the street. So looking up the driveway, there's a monument sign to the west side of the driveway, the landscape architect has proposed a split-rail type of rarian fence and some pavilions along the entrance side. Looking up, this is the hotel building. It's three stories. This is the main entrance and port brochure area that is partially hidden by the grave. This would be the restaurant and conference center building on the left as you enter the space. A little bit further into the site, this is approximately where people were parking for today's visit. From there, we were looking to the left at the corner, the flags that were in the corners of the building, as well as the hotel corners that would be over here and here. The path was essentially cutting through this area. This is kind of a bird's eye perspective, looking from above the parking lot towards the conference center building. This portion here on the left is the restaurant portion. We've tried to really break down the massing using gables and porch elements to help make it feel like a series of smaller buildings as opposed to a large building. This, this would be the main entrance, so taking left into the restaurant or right into the conference center. This would be the indoor event space, which has a capacity of about 400 people. This is the corner of the hotel, as seen from the front.
And the images we're seeing here, are they for us to, are they, in other words, will there be that kind of planting? Well, I know we'll go through a planting diagram at some point, but just so that we kind of visualize this as we see it now.
Yep.
Is that the kind of thing that you're proposing to have in the middle and whatnot, or is that just to make us feel good?
The, this is done a little bit in tandem with the landscape plan.
Yeah.
It may not be 100% accurate, given the types of plants that are available, and it's somewhat representative, and the landscape plan should be used as a final determination. But in general, pre-locations, et cetera, are meant to be pretty accurate. So what we're looking at here is the hotel itself. It's three stories high, we've kind of broken it up with some of the similar gable elements that we've, that we've used on the conference center building. We have all of the siding materials I have as samples, if anybody's interested in looking at those closer. These are a stone, manufactured stone material on the first level, and horizontally and vertically siding, clipboard-type products that'll be used, and we brought the stone up along the center as well.
And I might just point out, while you're sort of getting your head wrapped around how the hotel looks, we, the project owners, requested special permission from the national franchise, that it's going to be a Hampton Inn, so Hilton is the national franchise owner. They requested special permission to deviate from the standard look of a Hampton Inn. So the way that they usually build these, this would be a four-story hotel, it would have a flat roof, the color scheme would be white and white, gray, and blue, and it would be metal panels with a stucco finish.
And it would be designed, probably.
Well, so, and that's what I'm saying, is that during the design process, the owners were trying to be sensitive to the local architectural vernacular, and then also just the setting of the thing. So that's the color selection being an earth tone color selection, using materials that look more like a typical wood siding or stone on material, were all intentional things that were done to try and improve the aesthetics of what this hotel would have been if the national brand had come in and just built their standard.
Yeah, yeah. We did go in front of the design review committee too, with the town, there's a draft board, and they all supported this concept of a peaked roof, not a flat roof, and a, pretty no landscape.
One of the other points too on the landscaping, the direction to the arch, or the landscape architect, was we wanted to avoid having too many medium to tall pines, pine things, and trees and so forth, and you see how, what she's done on that. And it allows for, even at maturity, to have, it became a security issue, said you've got line of sight, instead of creating after 10 years dark areas or hidden areas around the parking area. So that's why this is one of the design elements that we had in it.
Okay, thank you. Again, just some, this one's more of an eye-level view, looking towards the hotel. Again, trying, trying to kind of minimize, there are several steps to the building, both horizontally and vertically within the roof, just to help kind of bring down the scale and get a little bit less obtrusive to the environment. And a kind of a look as if you were going to be entering into the port brochure area at the entrance, and the background shows the scale of the conference center and restaurant in the left. That's it?
Okay.
Okay. Well, let's, let's focus on some criteria now, and let's start down with the agency of natural resources concerns, and maybe, Jen, you should speak to those, introduce yourself, and we can have a conversation back and forth about them.
I'm Jen Mojo, Natural Resources. I work in their office of planning, and our office coordinates a review of act of duty applications amongst the agency's three departments. So the comments that I submitted to the commission yesterday are the comments from our staff who are reviewing the project in the context of whatever their permitting scheme may be or under a different act of duty criteria. The comments I provided yesterday, I received a comment from Laura Riker, who's in the division, the agency's drinking water and groundwater protection division, and the program is seeking additional app information regarding storage of hazardous types of materials and potential sources of contamination with respect to the project's location in the Roylton surface water protection area. So as mentioned at the site visit, it was surprising that this is actually within Roylton's district, surface water protection areas, surface water source protection areas, excuse me, tend to be larger than your typical groundwater sort of protection area. So the program is seeking additional information that acknowledges the location within this SPA surface protection area, and supplemental information about what are the potential sources of contamination. And I'm happy to provide an additional fact sheet to the commission which outlines what the different zones represent. So zone one of the SPA is the actual source in a 200-foot radius, and then zone two for a surface water sort of protection area is 200 feet within any perennial surface water, and then zone three is the area beyond that 200 feet. So the project is within zones two and three, and Laura, within the program, is available to review the supplemental... And Laura, within the program, is available to review the supplemental information and provide comments. But at this time, we're not requesting any additional conditions, just acknowledge that of the project's location in the spa, and understanding what are, what different materials are stored here in practices.
Okay.
And then, under criteria 2 and 3, my understanding is that they are, the project is still pursuing the source permit. And as discussed at the site visit, there is two sources, one which doesn't have sufficient deal, and that's currently being reviewed by the division. So if there's additional questions, which I assume there may be, given the articulated concerns, I'm not the expert for the program, but if the commission has additional questions for the division, those can be included in the resource order and provided by the program.
Well, also, one, e-streams was a concern, too.
Right.
And that was, if you want to bring back that picture that shows...
The stream?
Yeah, the stream. And I think we put that adequately on record, if I have, but...
Yeah.
Just want to mention your undisturbed area and where that comes back in.
Yeah, so this is probably the best sort of overall picture of it. As we discussed at the site visit, there's a number of maps that show perennial stream that just runs all along the south side of Route 66 to this identified Class II wetland. The visit with the fisheries biologist identified this, what is essentially a roadside ditch along Route 66 here, it's lined with stone, then goes into a culvert to the other side of Route 66, and then back under another culvert onto the project property. Only identified the stream as perennial, starting from the culvert where it returns to the property over on the west side. So based on my conversation, fisheries biologist was showing a 50-foot buffer from essentially what is the bottom of the bank, right adjacent to the stream. So this, these two dark lines are illustrating that bottom of the bank there, and then this lighter line, which is a little hard to see, but this is the 50-foot buffer, a significant portion of which is, actually contains Route 66 right here on the north side. But we are limiting the disturbance of the project to be outside of the 50-foot buffer, as shown with possible section. It's really hard to see on this plan, so let me call it a different one. So again, here's the culvert, and then here's the beginning of the stream, here's the edge of the buffer, and then the tree clearing. So right now, there's an existing sewer manhole for the municipal sewer system, so that's where we're planning to make our sewer connection. So there may be a little bit of temporary disturbance just in the edge of the 50-foot buffer to allow us to connect to this manhole at this location, but certainly, once that's done, that could return to being an unmailed area, unless something happens with the sewer line and it's to be repaired.
What are you doing to make sure that that does remain undisturbed?
Well, I'm sure the applicant would be happy to accept a commission, a condition from the commission, to maintain the 50-foot buffer as undisturbed area, but generally, the way it's going to remain undisturbed is by not clearing the trees and...
And visually, we saw that, that is in fact grown up to trees right now.
Yeah, they're quite tall, yes. Yeah, so it'll be, it'll be clear by the limit of trees where the edge of the buffer is.
It's not exactly something that you can have to mow and continue to mow closer.
No, you have, yeah, and beyond the fact that the mowed area, the proposed managed area for the hotel really ends shortly outside of the parking. Because of the way the landscaping was designed, one of the, the landscaping was really designed based on a very specific set of local criteria that are part of the specific zoning district that was implemented around the interchange, the interstate interchange. And one of the things was trying to maintain as much as possible the sense of the agrarian character. So a lot of the open areas that are outside of the parking, and outside of the area that we need for snowstorms and maintenance utilities, are going to be meadow areas anyway, and not really intensive managed, like lawn.
Okay, okay.
Besides the fact that there's also quite a large slope that's going to be created along this north side of parking here, that's really going to prevent the creep of that mowed area towards the, towards the river along there.
I think that covers that. The wetlands delineation and whatnot, just wanted to touch on that because...
You can, look, I'm happy to address it. So Paul had a site visit with, was it Shannon?
With Shannon.
Shannon Morrison, to review the, the wetlands was delineated by Arrowood Environmental last fall before we really got going on the project design. So Shannon reviewed the wetlands delineation and agreed with what Arrowood's work. She walked around the rest of the site with Paul and didn't identify any other wetland areas that need to be protected. So essentially, we are limiting our disturbance to the 50-foot wetland buffer. I know that because some of the disturbance is kind of close to it, she requested a condition that we mark out the buffer in the field before construction, and we're more than happy to do that. So on this plan, this darker line is the delineated wetland, and that was surveyed, the flags were surveyed, we did our site surveys, it's quite an accurate location. And then again, this outer line here is the limit of the 50-foot buffer, right along there.
Okay, now this shows with the squiggles that you have some wooded area there, but I don't, that's, or am I wrong?
That's existing wooded area, so we'll leave the trees within the 50-foot buffer.
Okay. Right in...
In this area, right here, yep. And so there, the existing, it's not shown on this plan, it's shown on this plan, the existing trees, that was the corner of the trees we were looking at, where that flagging was. So they'll leave this along the edge of the buffer here, these trees will be maintained, and then to the east of the, oh, sorry, west of the buffer, where we're planning to build them for the driveway area.
Okay. So we've got trees on that buffer, too?
Yes. And they're all, all the trees in the site are quite mature and easy to see.
So coming downhill at Route 66, you won't see that to the left? Won't see the hill there?
There is a portion, and we can, we have a view shed study that we'll go over when we get to criteria, probably. There is a place you can see the project on Route 66, but generally, you don't see it. You see it from, we can go over it, because it's more illustrative, the picture of the pictures while we're talking about it.
So the wetland, just following that back, the wiggle, the way that wiggles, very up top, if you can...
Here? So the wetland is sort of right along the Route 66 right away here, and then it cuts back to the southeast along this line, sort of noses out here and then. So there's more wetland to the east here, but we're not showing it because we delineated it along the edge where we're having closest disturbance.
Mm-hmm. But now you round circles right there, are those trees going in or coming out?
These are existing trees.
Yeah, that are staying there?
Yep, those are all staying there. Yep.
But we're still in the wetland there, I mean, just on the edge of it, the buffer.
Yes, 50-foot buffer.
Yeah.
Yep. And again...
And then we kind of, down the lower corner there, we kind of lose, yeah, just to your right a little more.
Here?
Yeah, right there where it says wooded there. Now we're no longer in the wetland, we're just outside.
You're outside the buffer even.
Yeah.
Oh, and then the buffer, so yeah, the corner, the existing tree line there is outside the wetland buffer by the time you get down that far south.
Has some of that been chopped already, or...
No, not now.
We're kind of back to that, because, all right.
So the tree line, as you see it here, is exactly the same as what you saw on the site at the site visit today.
Oh, despite the bronze source. Well, whatever, chopped off all that.
Oh, yeah, so the area that you saw was, a lot of that area was less, like brushier stuff that was really done for the property before we were started to do our exploratory and stuff like that, so.
All right, all right, good, okay, very good.
Could I, could I ask?
Sure.
On the condition that's proposed, and we assume that that's going to be conditioned, that language?
Yep.
Thank you. It helps with the contractor, because then when you put that in the plans, it's easier to manage the construction when it comes from active duty.
Oh, you'd like to see it on the plans themselves?
I'll put them on the plans if it's in the permit.
Mm-hmm, okay, very good.
I did mention to Shannon that, you know, I would manage, you know, putting up the soap fence, make sure it's in the right spot and stuff like that, and not allow, you know, contractors or anybody to touch in that 50-foot buffer, so I'm taking that responsibility to make sure it's done correctly. I'm the one who matters when things happen.
Okay, very good. Okay, let's jump to criteria 8, which I know is...
Can I just back up and address the comments on the source protection area? So...
Well, we'll come, we're definitely coming back to criteria 3, yeah.
Oh, so you'll even, okay.
Yeah, I just want to get, you know, while people are still not falling asleep yet and whatnot, I know that's...
Yes.
Can we do criteria 10 real quick in like 30 seconds?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, the regional commission feels that it conforms with the regional plan, so we're all set there. I did have one general question to the applicant about the access. And their access permit for detrans, do they plan any, what, shoulder widening or any slip lanes or anything like that?
No, there's no traffic proposed. We did have a traffic study done, and detrans had a chance to review it, so it didn't meet any of the criteria thresholds for widening or turn lanes or any of that.
We will discuss that further.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's go to 8, then, and start talking about all the issues that come with potentially 8 with respect to noise, light, aesthetics, does it fit, that kind of thing. And this is where we would expect to see participation from neighbors and members of exit 4 and that kind of thing.
Sure. So let's start with the view study, because I think that's actually really helpful with understanding how the project fits in the context of the area generally. So this view study was actually a requirement that the local zoning regulations have for the, like I said, again, the special zoning district that they have at the interstate interchange. So this, this was aimed at both illustrating the visibility of the project and also satisfying the requirements for the town zoning process. And just to get this on the record, I'm sure everyone is probably already aware, but the project has already been approved by the Randolph DRB, so they've been through all of these visibility and criteria themselves, and found the project to conform with their regulations. So what we did was, we flew a set of three balloons right at the main entrance to the hotel. So I realize this is upside down from the rest of the views we booked at today, so just to orient everybody, here's 89, here's the park and ride, here's the entrance where we came in, hotel and conference center. So right at the main entrance to the hotel, we flew a series of three balloons. The first balloon was at 50 feet, which is roughly the highest height of the hotel, right at the peak of that gable that's over the entrance there that you saw when we were looking at the elevation views. Then we flew a second balloon at 75 feet and a third balloon at 100 feet, just to get an idea of how tall something would have to be before you have to see it from various vantage points. And then drove around to different spots to see where you could see the balloons from. So there were, one perspective was from down here at the general area where the Samus project was previously proposed, right across the street from McDonald's. So you could get a sense of what you can see from this concerted lane down here. Both of the interstate off-ramps, to get a sense of whether the product would be visible from the interstate or not. Here at the park and ride, and then from a couple of vantage points up the hill, this is right on Route 66, so this is the wetland area right here, so this is looking across the wetland area. This is from the independent living facility, which isn't shown, wasn't built yet on the server photo, but that's where that photo was taken. And then another vantage point further up 66 to illustrate views as you get up closer to Randolph Center.
You don't have one from Ms. LaFrance's?
We don't, but we can discuss that as we go through these, these views. So starting from, starting from the independent living facility, and just before we look at this, I just wanted to point out, relative to LaFrance's property, so these are, I think these are 20-foot contours on this one, but you can see that this is the mowed area here where Mr. France was telling us that she's proposing to construct a residence. And if you follow the contour, it kind of goes along here and right, this is the same contour that runs right along the edge of the independent living facility. So this is where we took the picture from, essentially the same elevation as the LaFrance property, just to point that out before we start there.
Oops, went further back.
Just from a different perspective, I mean, essentially the same distance from the project between here and there, I mean, if you're thinking of like a circle from the projects, they're roughly the same distance away. So this is the view, this is the end of the independent living facility. And so this, these are the three balloons. So this yellow balloon here is the one that actually represents the height of the building. Yeah, thanks. You do not see my, yeah, so there's a blow-up of the three balloons, you can see them, but this is where it is in the picture. And then, so what Steve and his folks did was that they took the model of the hotel, three-dimensional model of the hotel, they placed it in this picture using the actual height of this balloon to place where the top of the roof line is. So here's the same view with the, with the hotel placed in it. So this is the back of the conference center, this here is the roof line of the hotel, so you can see the couple of steps in the roof.
Can we bring that lights a little bit more so...
I don't know if that's, I think maybe behind you in the hallway there, Tom?
Put it back.
Oh, okay. Yeah, try the other one, and if we could flip that the other way around, it might be better.
There you go.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
I knew Greg you'd be...
Yeah, there you go. Having time today.
So, so again, this right here is the back of the, here's the conference center, here's the restaurant, and then this is the hotel going sort of away from you, so you can see the couple of steps in the roof lines, the highest point of the roof line is right there. So you can see that you'll see it from here, but it's not interrupting the views. So right here is the top of the existing tree line that's to the west and downhill from the project. So all of those pine trees that you see along here and along here, those are the same trees you can see right here in this picture. So while the hotel is 50 feet tall, it's not taller than the existing tree line that's beyond it in view. So from this point, yes, you can see the hotel, I mean, I think it's reasonable to assume that if you build something, you can see it from somewhere, but it's not interrupting what most people would consider the view, which would be the view of the hills, foothills and mountains beyond the project. So we would expect that that relationship between the building and the tree line would be very similar at the LaFrance's property, as it would be for Morgan Rogers, because it's at the same elevation. Regardless of the angle that you're looking at the project from, if you're at the same elevation, the height relationship between the roof line of the building and the height of trees beyond will be the same if you're at the same elevation.
Okay, Linda?
Yes.
Is it okay to call you Linda?
That's my name, long as you can call me that. Me, too.
So is, can, can we see your property here, to the left there?
You can see part of, on the left down, just, you know, kind of above the A, is sort of a lower part of it. It continues to roll up, and there's a hill, you can see that tree line kind of heads up, and so there's a top of a hill up there. But when you get beyond the trees, kind of here in the foreground that are around a wet area, there's a lot more open space. I tried pointing that out today while we were up there, that there's more of an open space and a direct line of sight that would go right over the top of the, or right into the top of the hotel.
Again, I think you're referring to this area up here.
Yes, and just the angle down.
So what you can see from over here in that picture is kind of this part of the hill, but again, if you, if you look at these, it's a little hard to see on here, but this elevation contour goes like this. So the elevation here is essentially the same as the elevation at the, where that picture is looking from. So the picture is taken from right where that cursor is sitting right now.
But you don't have any trees blocking your view down that way into the field.
Right, right.
It looked like we could look right up.
Right, you can look straight down. And there are the two big trees that are planning on coming down where the party tent's going to be. So, and that, that I find very objectionable from, from the statics point of view.
Okay, if you want to move around some more?
Yep. So this is the view from Route 66, so the project drive, you can see this car sitting right here, that's about where the project drive is, and then this is the existing wood line, and then where you're adjacent to the large wetland, it's pretty open there. So again, here's the balloons that were flown, yellow representing the actual top of the hotel. So there will be a, when you're driving by the wetland on Route 66... Um, so there will be a, um, when you're driving by the wetland on Route sixty-six from the north, you will be able to see the project from there. Um, one of the things that's not shown well on this rendering, uh, is that, and what came out of the, um, the local hearing is we added some additional, um, trees along this back of the hotel here to sort of break up that, um, long wall that you'll be able to see. But, um, again, if you go back to where this picture is taken from, so you can see you're sitting right here, um, and you're looking over the wetland. So that's a very brief view for travelers that are going along Route sixty-six. Um, and then let me just skip down, this is, this is the view looking towards the project from a little bit further up the hill. Um, so this right here is the drive to Morgan Orchard, so it's just up the hill from there. Um, so by the time you get to this, past this cops of trees, um, you can't see the project anywhere on Route sixty-six. Um, so the view of the project on Route sixty-six is only, by the time you get down to this is that little cops of trees I was just pointing out. You have to get past that, look over the wetland, and then be before you get to these trees here, um, to be able to see that view of the project.
Could you go back to the B view? What, so, so this is a...
B, that's B.
No, 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 one more, there it is. So, that's a wall?
This is, yeah, this is the back wall of the, uh, the, uh, conference center here and the restaurant here. So you, this right here is the roof of the conference center, and this right here is the roof of the hotel.
It's not a separate wall that's...
No, 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 it's the wall of the building. Um, the, the DRB had expressed some concern about that long, um, wall of the building there in this particular view. So we added some additional landscaping, which we can look at in our landscaping plan to, to break that up a little bit more.
Can you go back to the first slide, please? I think that this, when you look at the entrance, helps to explain better the cutting of the tree and how that entrance is gonna be laid out. We were talking about how the, the buffer came down, the wetlands buffer, and then Brian was saying how that opened it up on both sides.
Yeah.
It's a little better here in color to, to see it.
So then there is a, a variety of viewpoints down here that were taken to illustrate the, the views to the traveling public on Route eighty-nine or, or folks that are accessing this conserved land down here. Um, essentially because of this very tall, very dense, um, mostly, uh, conifer forest here, um, which is, uh, it either owned by the project or part of the Route eighty-nine right of way. Um, you can't see it from any of these perspectives, C, D, E, or F, and I can go through those pictures as well. So, this is the, um, the off-ramp from the north side of Route eighty-nine, uh, looking back up at the project. Um, I would note that you can't see any of the balloons, including the seventy-five or hundred-foot balloons from here. Uh, this is, here is the parking ride, so this is the stormwater ponds on the south side of the parking ride. Again, looking back up at the project in this area, um, you can't see any of the balloons from this vantage point either. This is the southbound off-ramp, and the project is up here. This is kind of the trees on the hillside behind the project, actually, um, but there's additional trees in front of the project, uh, and again, you can't see any of those. And this is the view from the conserved land, uh, to the south of the interstate. This is the, the trees, uh, between the projects and this, and again, you can't see any of the three balloons that were flown from, from this vantage point. So, other than, um, from the properties up the hill, uh, the LaFrance property and, uh, um, Gifford property, and that, where the actual entrance to the hotel is and that short section on sixty-six to the north, uh, you really can't see this project from anywhere else, those are the main vantage points.
Question back here.
Yes.
Just to let you know, I, I could see the balloons from my property. I, I didn't get a G or a H or anything, and I'm still there.
So you could see from your upslope from that?
Yes, I could see the, the balloons, uh, of course I'd have to, the, uh, can I ask a question about the, where you say the balloons are? It makes it seem like there's a lot of woods there, is that an older picture or is that before or after you cleared the area?
Uh, so the current, the current tree line runs more like along here.
Okay.
But this, this does show the accurate location of the back of the...
Before they cleared it, I, I, I wouldn't have been able to see it. Now that it's cleared and when the leaves drops, uh, I are not there, I can see the Route sixty-six from it, so I can see the balloons there.
It's been...
Can I ask you a question? Um, you're doing balloons, but there's light coming, the balloons were a, a dot, but the hotel will be lit up, so there will be some visibility through the lights. And also from the Gifford property, uh, did you go to this first, the second floor or third floor to see how much could be seen of the hotel? Because I have a feeling that if it's lit up, uh, it's been visible, quite visible.
Well, do you wanna talk about lighting now?
Sure.
Well, um, I have another question about...
Sure.
Um, so if you go back to that last picture with the balloons, um, I, I wondered last time, why a thirty-five-foot balloon was it? And I know that you've gotten permits to go higher than that, but just to show the difference between what was initially, you know, allowed and what, what the variance went to to the higher level. But my question right now is also, further up Route sixty-six, did you do any studies further up Route sixty-six to see what they could see down, um, you know, further towards this road? What they could see down there beyond?
So Steve, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you drove around up there where the balloons were up, but you didn't see them from up there, so it wasn't...
Correct.
G was illustrated as the, you know, you can't see it from G, you can't really see it from anywhere further up. Anybody that might have a view of it, uh, from Randolph Center like these has this here, their view is blocked by the, um, um, the independent living facility anyway.
Well, no, I was thinking even further, further, um...
Up G?
Up, up, um...
No, G, G take the corner, yes, yes, from that area.
Yeah, so when I did the, uh, the viewing, I did go down this road and up past the intersection of ETC, uh, with no ability to see any of the moons or the site in there.
So we're showing the ones lighting?
Yeah, let's move on a little bit to lighting now, of course.
Excuse me for one sec, I'll just have to pull that one out.
While, while you're pulling that up, I just wanted to mention to the, uh, audience in, in general, one of the things we do when we, um, do, uh, criteria eight, especially as it relates to aesthetics is we do, um, um, the first question we ask is, does the project fit in the community in, in, in the context with which it's being proposed? So you can imagine, um, a large hotel being offered to be built somewhere outside of town, out, somewhere outside of ETC, sort of where some of your really big farms are, for instance. That you would have an issue there about context immediately. And so that's the first initial question we ask, and then, um, if we decide that it, it doesn't, you know, that there might be some issues and it might have an adverse impact, then we start to ask three other questions about, um, whether, um, it's unreasonable if it would, you know, the usual reasonable person standard. Does this so offend the, the, um, sensibilities of a reasonable person that it shouldn't be? Um, does it fit within community standards? Um, and then finally, has there been any attempt to mitigate this through, um, uh, means? In, in such case, we're about to talk about lighting, um, dark sky compliant lighting, so that, uh, there's no trespassing on, on the light, for instance. So that's kind of just a shortened version of what we go through in analyzing this. So, in, in, it might be helpful in terms of trying to direct your comment, then you think about whether this does fit, um, you know, on the edge of a village, you know, community area like this or not, or just off an interstate. Um, because that's gonna be the kind of balancing act that, you know, in, in consideration will be doing, of, of, aside about it.
So, uh, unfortunately, this is not a great presentation slide, um, but this is the photometric plan, so you can see that the majority of the site lighting is provided by, uh, pole lights around the parking and, um, sidewalk areas. Um, the pole lighting along the sidewalk is at a fourteen-foot mounting height, and the ones further out in the parking areas at a twenty-foot mounting height. Um, all the fixtures are LED, LED, they're full cutoff, downcast, dark sky compliant. Um, even so far as there's a, a flag pole there that is, is, the flag is gonna be lit, but the light fixtures on the top of the flag pole pointing down as opposed to being on the ground pointing up at the flag like, uh, many of them are. Um, average light, I'll just zoom in on this section over here. Um, fun. Um, average light level over the entire site is just over one foot candle. Um, and then if you take the parking areas in and of themselves, it's right around one and a half foot candles. Um, the one area that's generally lit up more than that is underneath the porcupiaire, it's lit up to five foot candles. Um, but that's completely, uh, lit by fixtures that are up inside the canopy there, um, so they are all only directed down right under the porcupiaire, and that's just because that really, um, the, the appearance of that area is more like a transition into the building, so it's a transition in light level between the much lower level generally on the site and the much brighter level inside the building. And, so if we take a look at some of the areas, so that the, the end of the calculation is where generally the end of the light is. Um, so you can see there's pretty minimal light, uh, being cast outside of the area on the parking, um, and this is illustrative too. The, the distribution of the fixtures is all cast forward into the, the parking area. So you can see here, on this side of the light, we're at like two foot candles, on the back side of the light, we're at a, a half a foot candle. Um, so the lighting design has been, um, done to minimize the amount of light that's cast anywhere that's not needed, which is the, the parking area of the building.
For those of us who are not familiar with candles, is there any way you can analogize that to something that we understand better?
Yeah, a foot candle.
Waterage or something, waterage?
Uh, well, waterage isn't, isn't really that helpful because the, so the foot candles are, um, a measurement of the power of the lighting on a surface. So in this case, the surface of the ground. Um, a foot candle is roughly the amount of illumination you'd get from one candle on something that's a foot away, which is a funny old English unit that involves candles, but... Um, so it's just a standardized measure of the amount of, of light that is hitting a surface. Um, so, uh, one foot candle, uh, is, I'm trying to remember the analogy.
Well, if we were to pull into, say, the McDonald's parking lot at night here on exit four, or the neighboring one, um...
You're gonna ask me what their lighting level is? I hate to speculate, um, because I don't have that information, but generally, one foot candle is a very low parking lot illumination. Um, the only place you're gonna see parking lot illumination of this level is in a pretty, um, recent development. Um, and, and so the one, the one that comes to mind is because it's a project I've worked on, it was just recently completed, is the Caladon Spirits Distillery in Montpelier. I don't know if anyone is familiar with that at all, um, but it's got, you know, it's got a large parking lot, um, it's in an area of town that's not particularly well-lit because it's out on the edge of town. So when you drive by that site, um, you, if you look at the ground, you can see that the ground is illuminated, but if you look at the site itself, it really, it's not like a huge source of light. Like it's, the light is going onto the ground on the cars where it needs to be, but you really don't, it's, it, I was surprised, to be honest with you, um, at how little of the light is, is really visible from a roadway where you're even a little bit below and, and looking into the site. So, I mean, if you think of something like, um, a car dealership in New Jersey, where you, you picture in your mind what, what is light trespass? You're looking at like a ten-foot candle average.
Well, let's get back to McDonald's for a minute there.
Sure.
What would you just, most of us...
I, i- i- if I were to speculate, because I don't have the information...
No.
Uh, on what the foot candles are at McDonald's, I think that's lit a bit brighter than what you're gonna see here.
Well, two or three or...
I, I am not gonna give you a number. We can go look at, we can go look at the application.
Here with the light shining down, I'd be interested, how, how many foot candles are, are, are right over your head?
Let me, let me speak to that a little bit, I, I think, and you may know the standard, is it five, this would be like class...
Yeah, I mean, a, a typical...
At a desktop of a...
Typical desktop in an office environment could be thirty, thirty-foot candles at desk level, so that's, you know, uh, I don't know what we're at here, this may be ten.
That, and one of the, one of the things that's about illumination is, and, and this has been required and, and it's evolved, you know, as the technologies evolve. We used to be, sodium vapor was all we wanted for Act Two Fifty. Then, the idea of cutoff fixtures, the standard is that you don't see the source of illumination from, uh, a travelway, right? So you're not looking up and under, so you're cutting that off. It doesn't do any good to, um, spend the money on a fixture that's lighting up the neighbors, for instance. So, when you look at a parking area like this, which could be like a, a supermarket parking area, the design is to ensure safety, it is to be seen. You can't read a newspaper, that's not the, the standard. Uh, but rather, from a security standpoint, a safety standpoint, are you able to be seen? When you walk out to your car, do you have the sense of security and confidence that you're not walking into a black hole? And you could do that with one foot candle. I mean, it, it doesn't sound like a lot, but you are seen and it's not scary type thing. The other thing that we did on this, and, and I'm sure Steve can add more to it, is we're not doing any building flooding, uplight. We're not showcasing the building, lighting it up, there are no lights up in the eaves to come down or anything, that's not the point. I mean, when you think about it, this is a hotel that's hidden, unlike most interstate hotels. There is no expectation of this being a place that somebody pulls out because they see it now that we're ready to stop for the evening. Most people go online and book their hotels so you can hide them, and the same goes for the illumination on the building, it doesn't have to be showcased, so we're trying to minimize that.
Um, is there, um, any timers on any of this at all, you know, or...
So, uh, it's likely that the area that, around the hotel itself, uh, won't be able to be shut off on a timer. Um, I think the outer areas of illumination, um, certainly we could consider something like a fifty percent illumination, but, um, you know, one of the things we're working with on this project is that there, there are certain standards that the, the national, um, hotel chain requires, and some of the things are around safety. So, um, you know, I'm not sure if they would be, uh, able to construct this project and then really not have lighting, especially in the, right around hotel area.
Well, let me ask you a different question, um, as I recall from reading your application, when it comes to choosing the amount of parking, you're trying to put together the rooms and the, correct me if I'm wrong, the conference center and the restaurant, and kind of utilize, not add each one up, but try to have...
That's right.
If you wanna explain that a little further.
Sure, so, uh, the, the amount of parking is selected based on a shared use parking analysis, and typically the way that works is you look at the, um, typical, um, generation of parking for each use, but then you, um, would, you apply a time-based factor, um, to see if there's overlap in the, the peak time that the things are under use. So the way we came up with a number was we, we said, you know, here's the parking generation for the hotel and the hotel employees, here's the restaurant, here's the conference center. Um, you know, and at certain times of day, the hotel is likely to be using thirty percent of its parking, but the conference center is using ninety percent of its parking. Um, so, co- comparing various scenarios and different times of day, weekdays and weekends, um, we looked at where was the peak parking demand, um, among the uses, considering the variation in parking demand over time, um, which is typically how a shared use parking analysis is done. So, um, we certainly, and this was one of the things we requested of the town, um, this is, uh, about a twenty percent reduction, what we're showing for parking, uh, relative to what would be required under the Randolph zoning regulations if we just took each use and, and calculated its parking demand. Um, so it's two hundred and thirty-six, I think is the number of parking spaces. Um, and under the Randolph zoning regulations, if you just took them at face value, you'd be looking at something closer to two hundred and ninety, uh, parking spaces.
Now, we, we want you to be successful if we approve this, um, and so you're hoping to keep it filled, I would assume. But it would be kind of interesting to see if, you know, there are gonna be some quiet periods, um, that's just kind of inevitable, I think. And if the outer parts of some of those lights could be quieted down and reduced when it was, I mean, if you could, if there was some sensitivity that was possible with that, and if the National Hampton Inn would be agreeable to that kind of thing, I mean... and if the National Hampton Inn would be agreeable to that kind of thing, I mean, um... I, I think, you know, what, I think the concern from the neighbors tends to be that they're up above this mostly and, um... Like when I come out of my farmhouse and look to the south, I'm always trying to figure out what the glow I do see is and what, and I never can quite figure it out, to be honest, because there's just Baker's store and both mills. And that's about it.
Yeah, so this project really shouldn't contribute to any sky glow because it's all, you know, that, those, those kind of things are from light leakage up into the air, right? And all of these fixtures are downcast and cut off and specifically designed to minimize light leakage, so, um... You know, like I said with that, that Caladon spirits development, like, even though you're looking at it from down below, you don't perceive that like light is up high. You can perceive that the things on the ground are lit. So if you can see the ground of this development at night, you will see that it's lit, but it's not going to be like glowing up into the sky. None of the elements above the, the twenty feet, uh, mounting height of those, uh, fixtures will be illuminated, other than light that comes out of the windows from inside the building or something like that, so... Um, it's not, it's not going to be, like I said, like a car dealership where you see this bubble of glow from far away. It really, it's, it's really quite impressive what, what modern light fixtures can do in terms of limiting where that light trespass goes.
I saw the neighbors light up, so to speak.
Literally, yeah.
When you mentioned the, the window, the, uh, the, the resident, uh, the guests at, at the inn. Um, do you wanna show us again what, how much is exposed to that direction, um, uphill or whatever? Take a peek at that if you can, somebody, you're...
I seem to have lost it here. Give me one second, I'll take a peek at this.
Do the windows space sixty-six?
So, um, the hotel, the windows are all on the north side and the south side here. Um, so from up the hill, and then the windows, there's, the windows on the conference center are all, you know, these three faces of the project. So there are very few windows, uh, that face this direction at all from the project. So you can kind of see, um, here's the front of the hotel where all the windows are and there's the side of the hotel where there are either, no windows or only the stairwell. I'm not sure, do you know, Steve?
There's a, just this corridor, corridor has a window on each floor.
Yeah, so one window on each floor at the end of the hotel. Yeah.
And, and I... Um, the loading dock that's on the back of the building that faces this, what, what will that have for lighting?
Uh, there's no formal loading dock on any of these buildings. So, um, any of the deliveries, there's just, there's an area for trucks to park, but the deliveries will then be unloaded off the truck and walked into one of the doors of the building. So there's nothing that you would look at and say, "That's a loading dock." There's a little bit of area of pavement for a truck to park. Um, but the deliveries won't be happening, um, late into the evening.
But they'll, I'm assuming there's still lighting on the, where the delivery's on that side of the building?
Only the parking lot lighting. There's no additional lighting to the delivery areas.
Okay.
And again, I mean, if you, if you think about this perspective, um, you know, the, what's, what's the roof? What's the eve height here, Steve? Do you know?
Sixteen feet, around sixteen.
Yeah, so I mean, this is, this is roughly the height of the, um, lighting fixtures in the parking lot. Um, so certainly from up here, you're looking down at the top of the, of the lighting fixtures. Um, and as you can see, the majority of the parking field isn't very visible from this direction anyway because it's blocked by the building, which is taller than all of those lighting, uh, lights, so, um... You know, if you're up a little higher, if you're on the second or third floor of this building and you can see the actual parking lot, um, you might see it and you might see the lights, but from this particular vantage point at night, um, you would see little, if any, of, of the lighting, uh, on this project. So again, because of the setting of the project and because of the, you know, the, the parking being focused on the side where it's towards the road and there's the majority of those very tall trees, you know, trying to be sensitive to the people who can see, um, the lit up portions of the site at night.
Any, any further questions about the lighting at this point?
Oh, I, just one more thing I wanted to mention. There, there was a comment about the height of the building being related to where you can see light from. Um, none of the exterior lighting is anywhere near as tall as the building. Um, and so, um, you know, again, other than the windows, which I don't know are, you know, there's not really anything we can do about that. And, and you know, the people that are in those rooms aren't gonna have their lights on all night either. Um, you know, there's, there's really nothing up at the height of the building that's gonna be extremely illuminated on this project, nothing higher than twenty feet. This is the mounting height of the parking lot.
I would think you're gonna probably be the, almost the most affected.
Well, sir, I can see, uh, if you go back to that A, B, C, when you got, uh, the last picture, where my house is behind it there, up above there, and you can look over to the parking lot. Uh, I believe that's to the barn and McDonald's there. Uh, at night, I see the evening glow on that, but from what I'm understanding, it's gonna be a totally different type, I guess.
But you'll probably be looking into their windows.
Yeah, that's, it'll be fairly close. That, that'll be blocking my view now that I get to look at sixty-six since they're clearing. They cleared that grid, I can see sixty-six.
I would mention that the, the Shabbat residence, uh, is really oriented, uh, north, south.
Yeah, my views are, are oriented west, so I got my, my property views, but my property around there, they're...
Yeah, right, there you go.
I have a front porch there that faces...
Right, so their, the front porch of their house is here and is, is oriented to take in the long views down this way over here.
That's the back porch.
So you don't have, you see Pyko and Killington from your house or?
No, I got some, uh, ever, little pies and stuff that are kind in the way.
Uh-huh.
Uh, I can't, I can't see. Everything you can see from exit four, that's what I've got to view. That's what I originally designed the house for.
Yeah, okay.
Also, the, uh, you bring up McDonald's again. I think we'd find that, I'm not an engineer, so I can speak like I don't have to. But because of the closeness of, say, the gas pumps to the barn and McDonald's being so close, that those, that lighting is more similar to what we're designing here for, right up next to the building at the entry. As you go a lot farther, you don't have that situation at the other side of the development, so you don't have the low candle power. Virtually, all of those prop, all of those two uses have the high, higher candle power because you need it for pumping gas and, you know, so forth.
Well, that's why I was trying to get them to, get you to speculate a little bit on that.
You need to be able to read your credit card.
Well, yeah, it's, it's a lot brighter. BTC is pretty bright up on top of the hill. Um, I've grown up here my whole life and BTC's always had a glow.
So the twenty-eight spaces behind the restaurant, the conference center there, um, those tend to be empty at night, right?
Yeah, those are in- intended for employee use. You're talking about this parking area right here?
Yeah, right there.
Yep.
And any overflow, although you'll have some pretty upset guests if they have to park, we were there.
Yeah, the intention, the intention is we've provided enough parking in these three parking areas around the hotel for hotel guests. So this is where, I mean, I think reasonably, everyone from the hotel is gonna park here. Um, this is intended to be employee parking and then this is the general, you know, parking for people who are accessing the restaurant and the conference center. Um, you know, and certainly when there are larger events, there's gonna be staff on site, you know, managing, working with the department and stuff, not all the time, but when we do. Okay.
Can I talk about how, how many events, how often?
Yeah, I already, yeah, definitely. Just wondering if we could, this is noon. I don't think we're gonna be able to do this without lunch, bro. Um, what's everyone's feeling about this? We've got, we've got three to do, we're still gonna have nine to talk about. We can go a little while longer, we got traffic to talk about. I don't think, you know, I don't know about you all, but I found myself, if I'm going too long, I stick to... You all wanna try to plow through or?
Yeah, we're probably going through it.
Yeah. All right, we'll keep going then. We need a window or five here somewhere.
No, I didn't break through this, that's...
Okay, um, so we've done lighting a bit. We can always get back to them if you have other thoughts later. Let's talk about the, the tent and the noise and the number of events you're proposing, that kind of thing.
Okay, the, uh, from a gross standpoint and, and Paul can help us with this because he has experience with it. We tried to, or we did locate it, um, the, the best we could, uh, from, uh, visual impact and so forth. I pointed out on the site and, uh, to repeat, when we stood out at the, uh, the site, the event area, uh, we, uh, Brian indicated that we're gonna be dropping that about ten feet. And what we're planning on is that that then becomes somewhat tucked into, you know, the hillside to the, to the south and to the southwest. So, uh, talk first about sound. Um, the sound will, uh, the, the closest neighbor, the closest building right now is Mr. Shabbat, and that's around six hundred feet away. Uh, hm, pardon me? Six oh five?
Six hundred from the tent area, it's three hundred and fifty-five from the closest parking area.
Oh, okay. I'm, I'm just talking about the tent is...
Oh, the tent, okay.
Six hundred, yeah.
All right.
And through, through the woods, uh, and then, uh, again, the, the, the tent area is sunso... From a sensitivity in design and trying to mitigate impact, uh, we felt that that was the place best, best to put it. Um, the, uh, you know, with the, the time and the operation of it being typically in the temperate months, uh, the trees are leafed out, there's more acoustic benefit, uh, as it's going up to the closest. In fact, we were talking this morning about his ability to hear the difference from the highway noise, from the interstate noise, whether the leaves are on the trees or not. So, uh, that's, uh, that's hopefully helping to, to mitigate things as well because most of the operation of that will be, uh, when there are leaves on the trees. So, uh, beyond that, the thinking for the use is, is the obvious, uh, weekend use, but there may also be during the temperate months, uh, uses combined with the conference center. So you could imagine that there may be an activity in the conference center where they choose to break for lunch out into, to a tent area or open space, whether there's a tent there or not. So that's, um, you know, we see it as, as those warmer months and that the current operation that, uh, the, that is imagined is that if all activities would cease at ten o'clock on any weekend night. You can have, you've got more experience on it.
Yeah, so I was a prior owner of Able Mountain Campground. And we were coming in front of the district, um, and out of thirty lots. And we had bands every Saturday night and we were done by ten o'clock. Um, that's, that was the rules. We manage it, there's no, you know, might give the band one more song, but that's it. Um...
Where are we?
Uh, Able Mount Campground in Bright Tree. I was in front of you folks, the add thirty lots there. Um, I brought in five hundred to six hundred people every weekend. Then we had bands on Saturday night. And I think you'll show, you'll see that I have a track history of managing the people and not disrupting. We were right next to a mobile home park, oval acres, and that's my job is to manage it, not let it go beyond. And I have a proven history of doing that.
So we're, so you're talking about, um, how about amplified music? So you're talking with, at these?
Yeah, I had bands and stuff, they would be done by...
No, no, but how about, what are you proposing here? I mean, we, we need more detail on what you're actually proposing.
Was there a state standard of sixty-five decibels that you're not...
Fifty-six DVA at the doorstep.
At the doorstep. I mean, we're gonna work within the state parameters of what decibels are.
We'll probably condition it with that, but I mean, we're trying to get a little better understanding, I mean, you know...
I, I, I also wanna add another thing. We're in the business of a hotel where people are staying and we wanna accommodate our customers. People are not gonna come to our hotel if it's a party and there's loud music all the time. We are accommodating the child in public.
I understand that, um, this is why, this is why, you know, when I first looked at this proposal, the hotel has its own set of issues. As soon as you start to put a tent up outdoors, you open up a whole nother set of issues. Um, and despite your experience, and I understand that, um, when it comes to trying to understand this, if your proposal is to have this during the, as you say, temperate, every single weekend, if you can, uh, and then in the middle of the week, we need to understand and know that, that that's what you're in fact asking for.
That's what we're asking.
And if you wanna go to ten o'clock at night, that you want amplified music, um, uh, you know, all that kind of thing. And then what you're gonna try to do to mitigate it, I mean, do you wanna have fireworks? Riverside wanted to do that.
We would have to come back in front of you if we were to, you know, you don't have...
Well, you could be asking for that right now.
Hope we're not.
So we need to, I think we need to have a little better understanding of what it is you're actually asking for. I mean, uh, I mean, is it essentially car polish, whatever you wanna do?
The, one of the difficulties that we're having after we got, after the submission, and Linda asked me to try to better define it. One of the problems is that it's, it's not a, um, a single, say a band or a single disc jockey. There could be several or different, different ones. So it's hard to come up with saying, "Well, this is gonna be the wattage or this is gonna be the volume and so forth." So going back to reasonable, you know, expectation, I honestly don't know, and having done a few of these, how we do anything other than a standard, um, of, of, of sound, of, of the sound volume.
Well, I mean, my suggestion would be with you draw, withdraw that part of the application at this point until you get your hotel up and you get your venues going and then you come back and ask for that at a later date when you understand better what it is you wanna do. Or, um, you know, you narrow yourself down a little bit more. Um, uh, we have to have evidence to make positive findings. Criteria eight, yes, the burden falls on those opposing it, but on the other hand, we need to have something in front of us that we can make positive findings based on. And simply saying that you're gonna have a tent there and wanna amplify music and wanna do it whenever you wanna do it and just cut off at ten o'clock at night, isn't typically the, the kind of thing that in my eight-year experience doing this that we've, you know, just, you know, given approval towards, uh, without some sort of other mitigation and understanding of it. I mean, just to simply say, "Well, you're gonna keep it within a fifty-six DVA," or you're gonna be up at the neighbor's property with the, you know, with your sound monitor, you know, doing that kind of thing and you're gonna require him to have the sound monitor up there? I mean, you don't offer any sound evidence here, you haven't done a sound study or whatever. You don't even really understand fully. You would need some modeling to understand that you're, you're dropping that down, you know, ten feet, what that really means for you. Um, hillsides tend to bounce sound all across the, the way and whatnot. I do understand what you're saying about, about having, um, being a hotel and having those who stay there not wanna have to listen to that, but on the other hand, that could well be who's staying at the hotel, um, those attending a, a regionally large wedding and that kind of thing. So I just, I'm not sure right now, what I'm hearing from you is, you know, very well thought out yet as compared to the rest of your project.
On the same token, though, in real life, like at the campground, I knew when the band was too loud and I had to ask them to turn it down. I, I think of myself as a neighbor and, but we're professionals. I mean, we're gonna be there on site and it's gonna be managed, we're not running a party. It, it's...
I understand, but that's...
It's part of the wedding business, you know, we're trying to create a wedding venue.
As, as far as the modeling and...
So you are trying to create a wedding venue, yeah?
Well, there's someone, yeah, and someone can run the tent, they can come.
The, um...
There's nothing like that.
The experience of, in my experience, both interior and exterior, and I talked to, uh, an acoustician. And the problem is that, you know, they can look at it and they can do some modeling, but there are never any guarantees, you know? And then you get into what irritates a neighbor, the difference between sound and noise. I mean, we've had that argument before too, where, you know, something is like a quarry. You know, it may not be as loud, but it's an irritating noise, so...
Well, I'll tell you one thing, not, not having any idea what the sound is gonna be like and what they will be exposed... and what they will be exposed to, is, is going to give them a lot more apprehension than having come to a hearing and having at least RSG or some expert try to assuage them to some degree of what, I mean, we have no idea right now what it's going to be like, either from any of the neighborhoods, other than your assurance that, you know, you're going to know when it's too loud and that kind of thing. And maybe the rest of the commissioner can feel better about that than I do at the moment. And I just feel bad to think that your whole permit is hanging in the wind over this tent, for instance.
It's an amenity. Your tent, event, or the, or the convention.
We're trying to accommodate our customers and what their needs are. I mean, that's what we're in business for. I mean, that's how we're going to be successful.
I know, but, okay, you've done a, what I would call a very excellent job of citing it, relative, except for one neighbor perhaps, in this situation, unfortunately. You've shown us how it's really not visible from the road, from the interstate, from all these other spots, which, you know, that wouldn't necessarily mean it couldn't be approved. It, it's kind of a bonus from that point of view. You've showed us how architecturally you've tried to diminish the height and, and the mass of it and improve the architectural design. You've showed us, you know, with the lighting, how you've got it all downward lit. I mean, to me, it's quite well thought out from what you've presented so far. And then you plop this tent down there, and there's just nothing else coming with that.
It's going to be done by ten o'clock.
Well, that's about all we know.
And in the summertime, I mean, that, it gets dark at nine, nine-thirty.
Well, I'll give you a different example of one.
And we have customers that we're trying to accommodate.
No, I understand, but that, the customers are not my concern here. My concern are the tent.
But it's my, it's my concern.
Well, it's your economic issue, yes, but that's not our concern here. Our concern is what it, under aesthetics, what is the impact of the noise in the area? And yes, there's a lot of traffic noise on, on the interstate. I, I can witness that from having sat there and listened to it. But this is a whole nother, a whole nother can of worms, if you will, that we have to, you know.
I don't want people in our room hearing all the music from the tent.
Let me, let me ask if, if we can take a minute to, to discuss, you mentioned taking a break anyway.
Yeah. I mean, you don't have to do that now. I'm just saying that, and we can ask for more, we might require you to go do a sound study. I'm just not sure how sensitive, how quickly you want to get necessarily. I mean, I'm not trying to hang anything over your heads with this. I'm just trying to present this as kind of, you know, the way I personally see the, you know, this at the moment. Neighbors have other concerns and whatnot, for sure.
I think if you, we can, we can contact RSG. We could probably get a turnaround from, you know, some modeling.
This just, just doesn't fit the level of, 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 well, you know, how well thought out your project is to me, the rest of it, I think I've tried to outline that.
So one of the owners is Perry Armstrong, who owns Rainor Shine Tent Company. He does do wedding venues around the state, you know, as far as Woodstock, Stowe and stuff like that.
And you have the conference center?
And we have.
And the center holds four hundred people?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So the tent would be just a very occasional thing? I think that's what, that's what.
Well, we, we're not being told that, though. You know, right now, they're not, they're just basically asking us to approve it without any stipulations at all. They haven't come and said, well, we'll only have five events here, we'll have one a month, we'll have, you know.
If, if getting, if getting modeling gets us over that hump, because in, I won't say it, it doesn't make any difference, but on, on frequency, but if, if the modeling showed, and maybe stemming from the modeling further mitigation, then maybe that's the way to go.
Well, then another example would be, we're not going to have any amplification outside of that tent. We're going to, you know, when we have weddings, it's going to all have to be, you know, just.
Like that.
You know, like, you know, without amplification, just, we're envisioning a, a kind of wedding, that cello is playing, or, you know, something like that, that, you know? That's the kind of thing I'm talking about, whereas it sounds like you're, and I'm not saying you can't have amplification. I'm just saying I can't understand what the impact of the noise on the neighbors is going to be.
But on the same token, if we're under the tent, we have people, and let's say the state send standard is sixty-five decibels, why can't we have that and say, no, you've got to turn the bands down, you're above our threshold?
Well, it's fifty-six DVA at the rest.
If that's what it is, if that's what it is, why can't we do that with the band that's there?
You could ask us to impose that standard with nothing else.
I don't have a problem with doing that, because I have that much.
But then, you know, we need to, we're thinking not, we're also thinking about the neighbors when we think about this and what potential burden that places on them to try to figure out if that is in fact how loud it is and whatnot. So, anyhow, I've said what I've said, and you all can think about it. I think maybe we will take a little lunch break here. I'm going to, you know, recess for half an hour. I don't think we need to go into town particularly or whatever, but just take a little break to think about things. Well, let's start it, let's call it forty-five minutes, we'll start back up at one o'clock.
Mr. Chair, I assume we're the best for thirty-nine B after lunch?
We absolutely are.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. I thought you farmers didn't have to work. So we're in recess till one o'clock.
One o'clock.
The other one we needed more for the contrast, let me do this. Okay.
If we need it again, I know where the switch is.
Ready to go?
Yeah. Okay, we're going to start to talk about nine B, primary agricultural soils and mitigation, onsite and offsite.
Yep. The, Ari and I have been working since last spring on this, and we identified the two areas of protected soils that we would be disturbing. So, what is shown up there, in what colors?
The disturbed, green and red.
Green and red, green is the light one?
Yes, on the outside.
So, that is, those are the two areas of, or those are the two, that is the area of the two disturbed soils. We did the measurements in trying to find qualifying soils for onsite mitigation. And we show that in the.
Light blue.
Light blue down in the bottom. We were, there are certainly other soils, but it's, we're not able to because of the, either the configuration or, or they're wooded, the type B, I goes B that's allowed to be wooded, Ari? And so we have onsite mitigation. So we are into the woods in here, but the soil types, this, first of all, this, we own all this, but it's not, you know, X does well, it's not, the confirmation is not, doesn't meet the standard. And where some of these soils, we could also use, but they're wooded and the, and the sea soils are not allowed to be wooded onsite mitigation. So we came up with that area in blue that could be used for onsite mitigation, which left us, I would say, ten point eight-nine acres that were requesting offsite mitigation.
Did you want to do any presentation on appropriate circumstance, or you want us just to do that ourselves?
That's, that's fine with us. I mean, we did, we crammed in what we could. And Linda and I talked about some of the other in the offsite. I mean, it's, of all the pliers, I mean, this is, you know, the backs. And it's, recent years, the per acre cost has really gone up, but it's, it's unfortunate. But we did the best we could to try to shape things the way they are.
And the parcel over on the left side, Ari wasn't, you couldn't use that because of slopes?
My understanding is that that was not proposed as onsite mitigation? Tom, please refer to what the soils were on that, on that side of the left.
That was the, the type that you couldn't have as wooded.
Oh, right, oh, yeah, yeah, so statewide, statewide B, that's what it was. So it was a statewide soil, but with a B footnote, which means a potential wetness limitation. And the NRCS, which rates the soils, the agency's practice or pursuant to their classifications, that statewide B soils, if they're forested, do not meet the definition of primary ag soils, because they already have a wetness limitation, and on top of that, they're forested. Usually, whether or not the soils are forested would not change their status as being primary ag, except for these soils with a wetness limitation. So those had a wetness limitation, so it wouldn't have been suitable for onsite mitigation, that was the reason.
Otherwise, we'd have come close to everything onsite.
And similarly, with this, this area down here is the same soil type, so that's why this sort of ends here at, you know, sort of a reasonable point where the, the forests, forested sort of wetness limitation sort of takes over in this area. So that wasn't available for mitigation either, even more it's a, it's a small chunk of the site.
So, yeah, I'm just curious, this is more academic, um.
Sure.
So you say it's a B, and that's the slope, so.
B, statewide, sorry, not, not a B slope, different, different use of the term B. Statewide in parentheses, B, soil meaning, it's an NRCS classification, meaning statewide importance. However, it has a wetness limitation. So unless that limitation's easily overcome, it wouldn't be a primary ag soil, so when it's forested as well, yeah.
Alrighty. No, I don't think so.
And if I could just, you know, Tom did a good job, but if I could just state sort of one more time that the key recommendations the agency had that are also in its review letter, is that the project would impact seven point two-four acres of primary agricultural soils, for which with the multipliers, some of them were prime soils, the Buckman loam, a multiplier, a higher multiplier. So with the multipliers, sixteen point seven-six acres of mitigation are warranted. And as Tom stated, five point eight-seven proposed onsite, and the agency accepted those five point eight-seven acres as being sufficient, provided there was no concerns about wetlands, which it sounds like there's, there's not in that area. But there's sort of a standard contingency about subject to confirmation from the wetlands program. And then ten point eight-nine acres for the remainder that were proposed onsite, subject to the appropriate circumstances analysis of this commission. And.
And what's the fee they're paying again for the offsite?
Can I get you the exact number? I'll get you the exact number.
Excuse me?
Little over five thousand.
Five one three eight or something like that.
Yeah, I'll get you, just give me one sec.
Per acre? But I think it's almost fifty-six thousand, right? I just thought everyone in the, you know, folks might be interested in knowing that.
Right, so, so, yeah, so I can give you the exact number. It is five thousand one hundred thirty-eight, you had it, good, good memory, Linda. Five thousand one hundred thirty-eight per acre. And again, ten point eight-nine acres are proposed offsite, so you can do the multiplication. And yes, that, for the, for those in the room who don't know, that money goes to, provided the commission finds appropriate circumstances and issues a permit condition consistent with that, those funds, in a general sense, go to the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board. They're used for the conservation of farmland in the region, with emphasis on conserving prime soils through permanent conservation easements. So, so that's, that's where those, generally where those funds go.
Thank you. Do you want to go back to anything with noise, or do we feel like we covered that? Do the neighbors feel like they got to say what they wanted about noise?
We.
No, I think we, right, I think we stopped with just, you know, not knowing what kind of events are going to be happening there. I know my daughter got married a few years ago. She didn't, you know, it's not popular to find places that stop at ten o'clock at night for, if you have a wedding and a bunch of out of town guests, they want to keep going until midnight. And if that's going to be both Friday night and Saturday night all summer long, you know, so to, to the point of asking what kind of events, how often, you know, as a wedding venue, stopping at ten o'clock, it might be, might not be the best.
Would ten o'clock be acceptable to you?
You know, if it were a neighbor putting a tent up in a backyard for their daughter's wedding, and it's one weekend in the summer, you know, have at it, you know, I'd be happy about that. If it's Friday night and Saturday night from, you know, May till October, no, no. That's, that's a big intrusion on, on the peace and quiet that is normally Randolph Center.
Let me just ask you one question about your, your situation up there, because we didn't go up there. So, you're thinking of building out in that field, that's what you testified to?
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've owned the property for thirty-five years, paid taxes on it, hoping to come back to Vermont.
But there's no house on it now?
There's not a house on it now.
Okay, so it's a piece of land.
We, as a family, go up there and picnic, we, you know, we enjoy something.
And you yourself, if I saw the address correctly, you're from outside Rochester?
Yes.
You are, okay.
Her family used to own this piece of land?
Yes, yeah, I grew up on this.
I, I was a buyer's agent for somebody who bought it thirteen years ago.
Oh, okay.
So, and they kept that piece in the middle there, that five acres, I, it was my understanding for protection.
So if you go back to the, I actually own two pieces of land there. One I've owned for a very long time that I would plan on building the house on. So, right there, that one, right, so those two parcels are both mine, they're both listed as separate parcels. And the second one is a little more downhill, that really is what abuts more closely to the hotel property. It was just to give me, whatever I want to do with it, you know, if I want to grow cannabis on it or goats on it or whatever, you know, I don't know what the state allows.
But originally, this piece was part of this piece of the reference, and they kept this piece to go with you, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and it was for protection of anything that might happen.
Right, so it's, right, but it's treated as two separate, two separate tax bills, two separate pieces of property.
But it was her, it was her family that sold it.
It's been in the family since the nineteen.
LaGen Booth, and that's who we bought it from. And I had represented him as a buyer's agent. I've been selling property for twenty-two years here, Miranda.
Okay. So, quite obviously, you have a direct, potential direct line. Now, is there any spot up on that upper piece that you could build that you could still have a view and, and not really see them?
Um, pretty much no. I mean, the view, the.
Does it flatten out up there?
It, it does flatten out a little bit up near the top, but there's a tree line, a hedge line of.
Oh, yeah, I see that.
Can I go to the map and just, oh, it's just easier than pointing back there? So, it does flatten out a little bit right in here, but there's a, the trees here, the upper trees. So the best spot for building a home, again, no permits at, at this point, but there has been a, there was a house on the property a bunch of years ago. It's, it's right there, and it has like, like Morgan Orchards, it has a nice view that goes out through, through there, but it does go right over the top of the property.
What do you see, I mean, you have the whole village behind you, so are you downsloping them, so you don't?
So one of the pictures showed there's a, a tree line here, so I don't, I don't see too much. And the trees have grown up in there a little bit, so I don't, there are places in there where allow the trees to grow up, so I don't see too much of Route sixty-six, Morgan Orchards, or, or in this direction. So, most of my entire view is out there to the mountains. And this does, this slopes down a bit, doesn't have quite the views. Like, when you stand out here, you don't, you don't get the views. But it is, yeah, it is what it is.
Thank you.
You got a question?
Yeah.
So, we're talking about eight now?
Yes, yeah, we are, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the details, I know it has the noise, which, when you all were clearing the field or people that walk in that field and they have a regular conversation, I can hear. So I, I know I'm going to be hearing corridors slam and everything, and it's going to be underneath the decibels. I know that's, that's part of that. As far as the, the party going till ten o'clock or whatever, I, I don't have too much concerns on that as long as it's eighties music. But, yeah, and I guess.
It's not eighties music.
Yeah, yeah. Free access, all that stuff. Okay, we're going to, but, uh, I still have concerns about the noises. I, I, I understand about the noises. Lighting, uh, you know, I just don't want.
Maybe eighties country.
What's that?
Maybe eighties country.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Wrong.
Some country running the truck. The other concern is, I don't know that falls into it, I, I retired from the Marine Corps in nineteen ninety-nine. I bought this property to build on as a retirement or an investment property. Okay, well, that's going to make my decision. They put a hotel on that, it's not my retirement property anymore. And, and I'm going to be selling it. So then I'm looking at my property value with a hotel and everything going right beside it. I don't see, I don't have facts and I've done research, but I'm worried about my property value dropping thirty, forty thousand dollars in- initially, and then after four, five years, it will go back up or something like that. So now I'm in a, uh, a problem because I'm retiring next summer. So I'm going to try to sell my house in the middle of this being built and stuff. So, this is what, I didn't know where to put that.
Yeah, there is no place to put it for us. You're, you're absolutely right not knowing where to, because we don't consider economic impacts on neighbors and that kind of thing. It's not part of the criteria.
Yeah.
And, and might well have that. I, I have no idea.
Well, I, yeah, yeah.
It's very, it's very, part of the reason I think they don't do it is it's extremely speculative, but, I mean, it's pretty much what come, would come out of every neighbor's mouth.
Yeah, and that's why I couldn't find, I researched.
You know, you need to frame it more in terms of the aesthetics and, you know, if you really try to have something not happen, then you have to follow the criteria, so the noise would be, you know.
Noise is, is definitely a problem. My views is like they stated, to the west. I also have the views that, you know, I have a small set of woods. If I'm getting lighting and noise and everything from there, it's just taking away from me tucking my place.
The other thing too is there's a burden of, of proof kind of basically here, being, uh, being our judicial, quasi judicial thing. And different criteria have different burdens of proof. And the criteria eight is actually on those opposing the project. So, it really becomes incumbent upon, if they can produce enough evidence for us to make positive findings, which I was questioning a little bit with what they're asking for with the noise, and I think I made that clear to them this morning, um, that I was skeptical at this point anyway, then it really falls on your shoulders opposing the project, if you truly are opposing it, to, to present us that the noise is going to be above and beyond the fifty-six DVA. You bring in the noise expert, and on and on and on it goes. You should see how expensive all that can get. You'll, you'll lose that thirty or forty thousand dollars in a heartbeat. Unfortunately. Um, so there's no clean solution to a lot of that.
Besides bringing up on my property and having somebody talk on the field and.
Well, no, no, we appreciate that. I mean, no, we, um, we, we don't have to necessarily go there to believe you.
Yeah, I understand, but, yeah, I, I totally understand.
Yeah. You know, we also can be aware of the fact that we could, you know, the interstate is pretty loud too, you know. So, it's all those things that go when we're trying to.
Depends on the days. It depends on whether the leaves are down or not. My concern was all, once the leaves are down and I can see the hotel, and I can see, you know, people and stuff, that the noise is going to.
No, no, I, I, I think there's no doubt that we probably all agree that you're going to be impacted, and you're certainly going to be impacted with thinking about, you know, your public right field, if you're concerned about that.
Okay, thank you.
While we're on the subject of noise.
Yeah.
Um, during the recess, we were discussing the comments you'd made regarding that, uh, looking for more information around the operation of the ten event area. Um, and we'd like to propose, um, that we prepare and present a noise monitoring and management plan to you. Um, so that'll include the, um, some details about the operation of the ten event center, but, um, you know, we really feel like trying to tell you what's going to happen there now is, is too, uh, difficult at this point, because it's going to depend a little bit on the market, and, and we can tell you something, but we could very well have something completely different happen in ten years. Um, so after discussing it, we feel that having a plan to manage the impacts is a better strategy for minimizing impacts on the neighboring properties rather than trying to say what is exactly going to happen there. Um, so what we propose is, um, the sound management plan that includes, um, monitoring program for sound. Um, so for instance, when there's an outdoor event, um, there'll be some, and we'll put this in the plan, you don't have all the details yet, but we'll put it in the plan, some, um, facility that the owners have committed to, to monitoring the sound levels at the property line and, um, you know, comparing them to the, the typical act of fifty sound thresholds. Um, at, you know, we can identify some relevant points, then everyone can look and, and see if they feel comfortable with those locations. Um, and then to go along with the monitoring, there'd be record keeping, um, so that we could go back and say, here is this date, here is our monitoring, here's the results of the monitoring, this is what the sound levels were. Um, so that if there's questions about that, then if we, we can have a record, that people can go back and rely on. So beyond the monitoring and record keeping, the other portions that we would propose to put in the sound management plan would be some standards for communications with people who are actually running the events. So, um, everyone who comes in from the outside to do an event who's not part of the hotel staff, there's going to be a contract. Um, you know, so we can propose some contract provisions and some, like, example communications that we could give to them, where we would say, you know, for example, like, you have to do a sound check, where we can see what your proposed levels are and make sure that they're adequate, you know, it's limited to this, the hours are limited to that, those kinds of things. Uh, for communication at the end, people to make sure that's clear and that we have a way of, um, monitoring and, and controlling what's happening with the events there. Um, and then also having a section for a protocol with communication with the neighbors. Um, so there's a clear line of communication between the neighbors and the ownership, um, that will allow for, you know, if something's happening, it gives them a way to get in touch with somebody and say, hey, you think this is too loud? And initiate a discussion, okay, here's what our monitoring is looking like, here's what's happening, we'll go talk to them, that kind of stuff. So that doesn't, you know, get us going straight to the state police or something like that. Certainly, the ownership would prefer to be able to communicate directly with the neighbors and, and make a neighborly effort to, you know, um, address any concerns that they may have in a lot of times it's happening. Um, obviously, we don't have this put together today, but, you know, we, we might request that you, um, you know, when you recess the hearing, issue a hearing recess memo, asking us to give you the management plan, and then the commission can have a chance to review it. Can you post it publicly so the neighbors have a chance to review it before everything is finalized?
That sounds like a good idea. Um, we might, in that recess memo, have some suggestions for it too. You know, a very simple thing is, if you actually have that tent with all the sides up, or do you keep the sides of the tent down on the back side, on the lane side, on the, the neighbor's side over here, that kind of thing?
Yeah, certainly.
That's protocol, that's.
That's, that's the kind of thing that we would present in the plan for those protocols, and it's certainly something that they've considered already with those tented events.
And then, you know, the, again, consider the number of events. I know you can't, the, some of this gets to be a critical condition issue in stove clubs, Highland, and we won't go into all that, but, but it is a little bit, it is always nice for neighbors. It's this thing we need to go forward to know that there's going to be, you know, a weekend or two where they aren't going to have to have any, be exposed to that kind of thing, so, um, anyhow, I won't try to write it for you. That's not our job.
No, we're, they just want some time to put it together.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
We understand that it's a sensitive thing, we want to try to address it, but crap on it.
Good, great.
Who's in time, though?
Yeah. Um, well, I think we've covered everything we need to cover in page, I go B. Um, and we can go back if someone wants to correct me on that at some point. Um, let's talk a little bit about traffic.
So, uh, as part of the, uh, DJO two three project, we did have a traffic impact study prepared by Laramie Dickinson, submitted as part of the act of fifty record. Um, and this, uh, traffic impact assessment actually was, uh, prepared to request the Vtrans when we were going through the process of getting the letter of intent for new driveway into Route sixty-six. They, they had asked for it. Um, so they did have a chance to review it, and they had, they didn't have any significant comments about the conclusion of the traffic impact study from Laramie Dickinson. Um, and essentially, the, the impact study is, is divided into two sections. There's congestion and safety. Um, so, let me bring this up here, so everyone can see it. Um, typically, um, the, the standard, uh, way of assessing traffic congestion, congestion is with a level of service analysis. Um, so this is just an example of what that means. Um, the, the traffic engineers calculated, um, the background traffic, uh, using both, uh, data sources that were published from counts that Vtrans did, and also they took data from the, um, traffic study that was prepared for the new, um, ag lab building, the state ag lab building up at BTC. Um, so they were including the, the projected trips from that on top of the background counts from Vtrans as well. So they calculate the, um, the, the existing level of traffic, um, as it is without the project, and then existing level of traffic with the project, and then they project out five years of traffic growth. They do five years of, projected five years without the project, protected five years with the project. Um, and then they, for this particular analysis, they selected the project driveway, um, the eighty-nine interchange, and then the intersection, um, where Route sixty-six takes a left up by Vtrans, I'm, I'm sorry, um, BTC. Um, so those were the intersections of interest. Once you get beyond those intersections, it gets a lot, a lot harder to predict where people are going, so, but, um, you know, if you can show that there's no significant traffic impact at those closest intersections, you can assume that there's even less impact as you go further away from the site. So, uh, level of service is measured on the average, um, delay that, that, uh, person driving would experience trying to make a movement at an intersection. So typically, the worst level of service is for a left turn, because you have to wait for people, for a hole in traffic. Um, so these are the criteria for the various levels of service, A through F, um, and then average seconds of delay for each, um, level. The Vtrans standard for, uh, unsignalized intersections is level of service D or better, which represents around a thirty second delay when you get to the intersection between when you stop and when you get out into the traffic. Uh, so the.
Has that changed? I mean, statutorily, I didn't, I didn't even think D. I'm just case logged. Okay, go ahead. I'm just curious. Have you ever the case logged in on that for a while?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that's, um, all based on Vtrans.
It seems like it's approaching the frustrating level of when people are going to go dashing out and.
Yeah, and I think honestly, that's probably how they develop it, is when, when is the point when it becomes dangerous? Because people are making unsafe movements, so. Um, I, I am not a traffic engineer, so I can't tell you how Vtrans came up with D, but I will rely on the traffic engineer that we hired to know that D is the appropriate level of service. It's, it's a little bit neither here nor there for this discussion, as you'll see in a second.
Yeah, good.
So this is the results of the intersection capacity. Um, so we have the interstate, um, on and off ramps, we have project access, and then we have Vermont sixty-six up by Vtrans. So, um, this is indicating levels of service, so there's no build, there's without the hotel, build, there's with the hotel. So assuming that it's built in twenty twenty, five years later is twenty twenty-five. Um, as you can see, the, the construction of the hotel has no effect on the level of service anywhere. Um, any of the, there's no change in any of the categories of level of service with or without the hotel. Um, and even the projected impacts at worst are an increase of about one second, uh, down here at the interstate. And hardly any impact at all by Vtrans, tenth of a second, uh, worth of impact rel-, you know, relative to the project traffic. So, um, given the, given the level of traffic coming, that we're expecting to come out of this, uh, at, and this is all, I should mention, this is all done at, um, the peak hour of traffic on Jason Streets at the, um, the, the design hour, which is the thirtieth, thirtieth percentile highest traffic, um, day of the entire year, thirtieth, thirtieth highest day. Anyway, it's a, it's a high, it's not the most high traffic, but it is like statistically hidden traffic at which these are, um, calculated. So that's, you're not expecting to have any, any real significant impact on the capacity. In terms of traffic, uh, safety is usually typically, um, assessed with, uh, site distances. So when you're sitting at the, um, project driveway, how far can you see in each direction? How far can cars, can you see you in each direction? Um, that stuff is all, uh, based on FHWA. Um, so the recommended, uh, so there's two kinds of site distance. There's intersection site distance and stopping site distance. Intersection site distance is based on, um, getting a seven point five second gap in traffic, which is what the traffic gurus have figured is what you need to be able to get out into traffic without significantly disrupting the flow of traffic. Um, the stopping site distance is the amount of distance you need to safely stop if a car pulls out in front of you without hitting them. Um, so typically, you use the intersection site distance when you're analyzing the safety of a new intersection. Um, we have, uh, we well exceed, so the, for the forty miles an hour is the speed limit in the vicinity. Four hundred and forty-five feet is the intersect, the recommended intersection site distance. So we have six hundred feet to the west downhill, um, currently, and I should mention that these are also measured at a point that's fifteen feet back from the edge of the right of way. Um, so that is additionally a bit conservative, because I think most people, their eye is fifteen feet back from the edge right before they turn out into traffic. Um, but there's, right now, there's four hundred feet to the east uphill, which is slightly less than the four hundred and forty-five we need. Um, but there is a group, uh, and that's mostly limited by the tree line along the wetland. As, and then that corner, as it goes around, sort of turns into the wetland. But, so there's a group of trees that stick out further than the rest. Um, they're, uh, the major, they're the major impediment that's causing that four hundred and five foot site distance. It's like a group of two to three trees, uh, all together, uh, just on the other side of the ditch there. Um, so we are planning to, um, remove those trees, uh, from there, and then we can improve our site distance to four hundred and fifty feet, which exceeds the recommended four hundred and forty-five feet. Um, so, uh, though, though it's downhill and there are a few curves there, you know, we, we picked the point of the driveway in order to maximize the site distance, and with that small, um, but when one multi trunk tree that needs to come down, we'll have adequate site distance in both directions.
Do they, uh, I know we had a hearing once where, uh, despite the recommendations of the speed limit, the actually, uh, the attorney opposing the project was able to show that, that in some ways that wasn't relevant, that you should actually look at the actual speed limit, which in many cases is considerably higher.
You mean the actual speed of traffic?
Yeah, the actual speed of traffic.
Yeah, I, I mean, I have heard of that being done, but it's not, it's not the standard to which the projects are typically reviewed.
It's pretty effective, though.
Yeah, but, you know, we can do a project specific count for this, and Vtrans didn't ask us to do a project specific count, and that's where you collect the data on, I think what you're referring to is the eighty-fifth percentile speed.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I certainly have seen that happen at projects before, but, um, there wasn't enough concern from Vtrans after their review to ask us to do beyond this, uh, standard step of evaluating the site distances based on the posted school.
Yeah. Well, I suppose they're not the only ones that could be concerned, but, um, you mentioned somewhere that it would be over a thousand cars, just slightly over a thousand cars. I think it was under act two fifty application under.
Thousand thirty-nine.
Thousand thirty-nine, wasn't it?
Right.
Yeah, and that was, um.
With fifty-nine at peak?
Yeah. I guess I, I just, I was a little dumbfounded by that. If you're having a, if you're having a conference there, and the conference is going to start at nine o'clock in the morning, ten o'clock in the morning, or whatever, I would think you certainly, being geographically in the center of the state, would like to do that. And we have, uh, Vermont small fruit and vegetable growers, we go to Lake Moraine every year. Gosh, why should you do that when we're off at eighty-nine and we're in the center of the state, right?
Like you're thinking.
But, but, and that gets, that may even get more than four, and you may be living in some of those.
You may be so popular.
We hope so.
But, so, I mean, you, when you have to get everybody in then, I mean, that didn't really, this study didn't seem to address that really, from what I could tell.
So, the, the way that these, these, what we typically look at is not the daily number of trips. It's the number of trips that are going to affect traffic congestion, which is looking at that peak hour, right? Because traffic congestion is only a problem, the number of trips is only a problem if the capacity of the road can't accommodate the number of cars that are there. So that's why we don't generally look at a day, day one, and we look at the peak hour. So that's why we generally look at a day, day-one number, we look at the peak hour in the park. So these, these peak hour numbers are, the way they determine them is the Institute of Traffic Engineers has since the eighties gone around and collected data from traffic counts from various sites all around the country, and then they break them down into categories, and they provide you the statistics on traffic generation for each category. So the particular category here, number three-ten, the hotel category, the hotels that they were performing counts, traffic counts at were hotels that had restaurants and conference facilities in them. So they don't provide a separate traffic generation for the hotel from the conference center. So when they've counted those, and they've statistically come up with these peak, peak hour trips, those are at hotels that have conference centers already, so it includes both the hotel traffic and the conference center traffic. And frankly, when I first looked at it, I threw the restaurant traffic in there too, but Vtrans didn't agree with us on that one, so we're having the restaurant counted as a separate generator. And in fact, we're conservatively, conservatively using the peak traffic numbers from high-turnover restaurants, which is like your McDonald's or your fast casuals, Potlay, things like that. It's not necessarily the kind of restaurant we're gonna have here, but in order to conservatively estimate the peak traffic impacts, they use the more, the use that generates more traffic, so.
But you're saying nothing for like a conference where you'd have a large number of people coming in at one time and then a large number of people exiting?
Well, certainly that may, certainly that may happen, but that would be reflected in the data that we're using. So when they do these counts, they don't just like count for an hour, they'll set it for a day or a week or something, and, and the count will reflect what is the, how many cars are going in and out. And they give you, to you in various ways, you can get the, the peak hour of the actual use, you can get the peak hour of the adjacent streets. Typically, we use the peak hour of the adjacent streets because that's the point at which you have the most impact on levels of service and stuff. So, while there's not a specific like breakout for like if you have a big event, you know, this, this is a typical-sized conference facility for a hotel of this size when you look around the country, and, and those trips are, they're built in to the number that they're using.
But this doesn't show any conference here.
Right, because the way they did the statistics was based on the number of rooms in the hotel, but the hotel also had a conference center. You see what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying, isn't it? But your conference center is not seventy-nine rooms, it'd say two people would be a hundred, you know, a hundred-and-sixty people or so, it's four-hundred capacity, it's a lot bigger.
Well, sure, but most hotels have far more conference capacity than we have capacity for rooms, you're not expecting everyone who comes to a conference.
No, I just wanted to see it reflected, and I don't, you're trying to convince me that this word hotel includes the conference, I just don't get it, you know?
Well, I, I didn't bring the book with me.
Because I would have thought that was important, you know, to see that.
I mean, I think if there is some conference that is letting out a peak traffic time, the Afka would be willing to implement management procedures, you know, having somebody out there in a vest directing traffic and making sure that things aren't safe.
The town wasn't concerned about it.
We presented this to the town and-
The police or whatever.
Yeah, and, and again, Vtrans reviewed both the traffic generation calculations and the impact calculations, and the, their traffic engineers didn't have any issue with either. So I understand that it's a little hard to disentangle, but because the hotels, I mean, you need something to predict on, basically, and you never know exactly what's gonna happen, but the best you can do is have a wide net level of statistical analysis, and because these traffic counts were performed at hotels that do have conference centers, then they should reflect the traffic from both uses.
Yeah, but-
We did get the letter of intent from the state of Vermont on the-
No, no, I just, it doesn't make any sense, I mean, if you've got four hundred people coming to a conference, and you've got, say, two in a car, that's, you know, two-hundred-car trips, and you only showing you the peak hour coming to the conference, twenty-two people coming in, twenty-two cars coming in, and then exiting fifteen, well, presumably, they wouldn't be exiting, that'd be a few hotel guests leaving.
So you need another cat, you're saying they need another category that would be just a conference, not a full conference?
Well, I mean, this, this doesn't impress me.
The thing is, there isn't one, so I mean, this is the standard, this is the, this is what everyone uses to estimate the traffic impacts across the country.
Well, okay, let's just for a moment, I'm just, I don't mean to argue with you about this, I'm just kind of, let's say we didn't have a hotel, this is just gonna be a big conference center, okay, and all they do is conferences, right? So now what would you be using for a traffic study?
I think you'd have to ask a traffic engineer, and I'm not a traffic engineer.
Oh, okay.
All I know is that a traffic engineer prepared this, and this is the appropriate land-use category to estimate the traffic.
Well, let me put it differently, we're at Riverside when we've done, dealt with them, because they do acknowledge that there'll be lots of people coming all at once, they actually hire someone to manage the traffic on those days, right? Is it here? Yeah. And they have someone out there in the road doing that kind of thing.
And I certainly think that the Afka in this case would be willing to do that if, if that's needed.
My only question is, coming down that hill, it's quite steep, it's quite fast. Now, I, I think you're gonna have most of these people getting off the interstate, either coming south or north, so once they do that, then they're just gonna be peeling into it. So I think they're in pretty good shape there. It'll be anybody coming down the hill, yeah, it'll be leaving more than anything else where you might get more critical.
So you'd have an employee here, because I know there's no more police that ran off right, you're saying?
Right, yeah.
There is a sheriff department.
Right, this, you get the Orange County Sheriff, or in one of your counties.
State police.
You don't want to catch out the state police there.
Yeah, I mean, regardless, if, if there is a particular event that we know is going to be getting out at a time when there's a lot of traffic, then, you know, they can provide employees to manage the flow of traffic in and out of, in and out of the driveway.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, I don't know how we present a traffic study to you that isn't done in the way that everyone does a traffic study, you know what I mean? Like this, this is the standard way to do it, it was prepared by a traffic professional, it was reviewed by other traffic professionals at the state agency that manages that.
I know, I just find it irrelevant.
But it's not, though, is it?
It's irrelevant because it doesn't deal with, it doesn't deal-
By criteria five, we're, we're looking at it from, from the standpoint of how does it stick to the safety congestion issue?
Yeah.
Criteria five, so it's not just because Vtrans has looked at it and said, you know, it's wonderful.
Well, right, but I mean, the-
It's not a rebuttable presumption because of Vtrans as to how we deal with this.
Okay, I guess I'm just struggling to present you with a different, a different evidence than the conclusions of a traffic engineer who's performing an analysis on the safety and congestion that's relative to the project based on standard accepted engineering practices. I, I don't know how else to present it to you.
Well, that's where the-
This is my recommendation request.
It's where that other, is that RSG, which one is that that comes in and does that? But, I don't know, I'm asking you to do that.
Yeah, Laurel Dickinson is, is a safety coordinator.
Means a licensed traffic engineer.
No, I get, I get what you're saying, it's just, do you understand what I'm saying, though?
I, I do understand.
You do get it, right?
I understand what you're saying.
I mean, if you've got four hundred people in a facility, and it's six o'clock, and they're out of their conference, it's peak hour kind of, issue of five o'clock, and they're headed home, they're all gonna hit that intersection at once, and this is irrelevant to that. For that particular moment in time, at that particular conference.
Yeah, so, so for that particular moment in time, if everyone gets out at once, the Afka is willing to provide staff to-
Well, that's the kind of thing I did, but I didn't see that in the application anyway.
Okay, well-
Well, because this data didn't, didn't show that it required it, if you're saying with the logic that it would, then it, then it would happen. I think of a, a factory letting out four hundred employees, and what happens there? Well, they back up on the property, and then they, they leave, you know, as they get-
Well, they're gonna back up on this property too, and they're gonna be getting more anxious like I do, I don't like to wait at all, to get out of there, and they're gonna be turning left now coming out because they're all gonna be getting back on the interstate, and so, and you're gonna be having that track coming down that hill, you know, faster than forty miles an hour, I can guarantee you.
Not at the road, so-
I don't think there's any of us in this room, even us over sixty, that probably wouldn't be at least trying to hit their brakes, but generally going faster. So I mean, I, I think it's something to definitely consider doing.
I, I think that if it's, that if it's needed like that, that would be prudent for, you know, it's a combination of when the thing is booked, and are people all gonna be leaving, and, you know, at the same time, could be an event as well, not just a-
Yeah, I mean, presumably, someone will go eat dinner in your restaurant, that'd be-
Right, and, and maybe there'll be an attenuation as, as people leave, or you're not gonna, you know, maybe go have a drink in the bar before you go, but I, I think that from the analysis standpoint, it's as far as we can take it. If in practice, you find that every year when, when your group comes in, you actually all get up and go out at the same time, so we have a stack-up, then your meeting planner and your meeting people are gonna say, hey, we gotta have some traffic control, either onsite or out at the, out at the highway. And I think it's, I mean, it's like you don't, you don't build a church for Christmas and Easter, right? So you deal with, you deal with those big, big events especially.
And I want those people leaving happy, too, I don't want them to have a bad experience by being lined up and not being able to get out safely, I want-
I think it can be dealt with on-
Yeah, well, no, we don't deny under five, as you probably know, we just try to work things out so it's safer.
Yeah.
I have a question, the studies of other hotels, were they single-lane? Because most hotels that I go to have, have two lanes on either side. Here, we're talking about a single lane down and a single lane up, so, I mean-
So that's a bit separate from the, the data that I'm talking about, the studies of other hotels that I'm talking about are only relative to the number of cars going in and out, and then the analysis of the, of the single-lane exit was done specifically for this project, so the capacity analysis says we have a two-lane stop control exit, and then they use that and some, you know, standard engineering principles to predict how long it can take you to turn out. So the fact that the two-lane entrance and exit is taken into account specifically for this project, configuration of the project driveway.
Did any of you should question? Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'd just like to say one way which helped that turning of traffic problem is for people just to go up to VTC, which is a conference center, and so this is competition for the, an established conference center, and I think that's not a good idea, but we could just go straight up the road to where that one is.
Thank you. Which conference center is that at VTC?
VTC.
What, where? Which building?
The whole, the whole thing, they do conferences.
Yes, sir. I, I understand what he's getting at as far as you gotta use something as a basis to, to do the study and everything. I'm going off of twelve-year study of me pulling to the end of my road and trying to pull out of there for the last twelve years, and every year, at least three times a year, I almost get clipped going there, because of the fact it's forty, everybody does fifty. Down below me is the blind corner coming up from the interstate, up just above where they're entering is another corner above me that they're coming down, so you got traffic going there, by the time you hit your gas, there's people on you coming down there. I can, the only feasible way, and I don't know who, who can do that, is the reduction of the speed limit, because the volume of that traffic is gonna go, you cannot factor in when the conferences, because they don't know when the conferences are and when their peak is or anything, they haven't even built it yet, but I can guarantee you that it's, it's gonna go up to where I'm not gonna get out of my driveway unless I, I take a chance to get out of there if I'm gonna have to go to work. So, an actual speed reduction, I don't know if I get with the town or anything, to slow it down might be one of the benefits, so I at least have, well, it says I got, you know, I have to wait ten seconds, but, uh-
Not the state road.
No.
AOT's already looked at it.
Yeah, yeah, so-
What are needed to be done? It's a state ro, it's a state road.
It's a state road, so it'd have to be the state to reduce it, because-
And they've already looked over the application.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, what, what kind of collisions have been in that area? Do the shows go?
Uh, so they do, as part of the safety, they do review the high-crash locations, so there's no high-crash location at the project.
There's one-
The closest, the closest high-crash location is on the other side of the highway by McDonald's.
I know someone who was killed on that road there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's near.
I have my, my, uh, mailbox taken out at least once a year, my people coming through, that's an icy stretch there, and I'd shelter the driver in the bank and have him get my bank and stuff, you know, they pay attention to you instead of the road, so it gets very dangerous from wind, too.
I, I might just add regarding Oakford's Lane, is that right, Oakford's Lane?
Yes.
The reason why we, part of the reason why we put the driveway where we did is because the site distance is significantly worse at Oakford's Lane than they are at the location where the driveway is. So we located the driveway at the location along the site that maximized the safety and site distance, along the choice of where we could put it in our frontage. And we actually own Oaklane, and they have a right-of-way across it, and we're, we're trying to be sensitive to the name, we own Oaklane, it shows it on the survey.
But there's a right-of-way there.
There's a right-of-way, yeah.
Yeah, for VTC and anybody that owns it.
But we own land, and if you got it right, right?
Can those trees be opened up?
Yeah, well, with, with you owning the lane, either way, anybody that owns land there has a right-of-way to it, so you have ownership.
Well, I asked them to chop a few trees down on either side.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I wonder if it could be opened up.
It's not the trees, it's the corners, there's a sharp corner there, I bolted in my driveway, I can see down as far as the corner, which is seven, seventy yards. People come around there fifty miles an hour, not forty, fifty at least, sometimes forty when they slow down, and then up above, it's great where they're putting their entrances, is up above, I can still see somebody pulling out there, but right above them, there's another corner that I can't see, so either way, I'm telling the traffic's gonna be a little bit faster, a little bit more, now, my concern is with the extra traffic, I'm gonna get a quarter of the amount of time to get out.
Did you say you're retiring?
Yes.
Well, just be stay at home then, won't you?
No. No, no. Well, yeah.
We also wanted to be sensitive, not share the same road that residences were on, and we're trying to meet the neighbors' concerns about-
I know, I can understand.
Yeah, yeah, that's all.
We, we were trying to be good neighbors by creating our own access and safe.
And there's nothing you can do, or, you know, except for reducing the speed or-
Winding the road, which-
Yeah, widen, yeah, yeah.
But AOT looked at the project and said it wasn't needed.
Um, apropos of traffic and seeing things, I don't mean to be a nuisance here, but does that sign really have to be quite as big as that?
Maybe not, I-
Do you share my feeling a little bit?
I do.
It's pretty big, for the area.
It meets the local zoning requirements, the sign words, I'm on the plane of-
That might be, I know you have a big one across the street that has about ten different things on it or a number of them, but, but, let's see if I could bring that up, I'm just curious.
I'm not sure that the-
The mothership?
No, it's, it's more of a-
It's twelve feet, six inches tall from the average grade, and then it's eight feet, one and a half inches, the sign itself, and then you've got eight square feet on your restaurant sign, four by two. I just was as much asking as anything, it just seemed, I, I, I can't quite visualize it in that spot.
I think that's one of the problems, is that we got the, the renderings, what I, what I submitted and everything, without being able to put it into our slides, and that might help to, you know, get it into scale as opposed to this. I wanted to get this in because it did meet the local requirements, whether we look at it aesthetically, it's, it's too much, I mean, that's something up for the owners to, to determine.
So that one you submitted on, as an exhibit, that's different than what shows up in the rendering that you showed earlier?
No, the location and everything is, is there, I don't know if the rendering was to scale, I mean, it's just-
Pretty close, but it's-
Yeah.
It was smaller on there, I thought.
This was an older, prior to that. Yeah, well, that's sort of a-
Well, the fence is maybe four and a half, five feet.
That's a little tricky, because, I mean, that road, I mean, I feel like I'm not on that road anymore, that I'm somewhere back. That I'm somewhere back.
Yeah.
You're the architect, you tell me where I am, really. I'm not on the road anymore, from this perspective.
Well, they, yeah, I mean, it's hard, really. From a different angle or from a photo from the road, I think would be a good perspective to look at to get a sense of that.
We've got a long way away right now, I feel like.
I don't see the restaurant sign below it, but...
Yeah, it's just, because the rendering was done back in April, so we didn't have as many details about the sign then as we do now.
You want to keep it above us, you know?
Yeah, my son's a landscape architect in Massachusetts. He's telling me about all the tricks they do to get around there. People like us and whatnot.
I have a question about the placement of that. Isn't most of the people coming from the right? Why isn't it on the other side? So they can see it?
Well, that's, I mean, that is, you've got it skewed towards us over in the boonies over here.
Well, it's not, the orientation of the sign, if you look at the sight plane, is actually opposite of the way it looks there. It's actually closer to oriented down a thing, if you look...
Okay.
It's a gateway.
It's on the, it's on the west side instead of on the east side.
But you wanna be, you wanna get people to see it as soon as they can, to alert them to it. You don't, I mean, to move it up another 40 feet could have another 40...
That thing is 40 feet wide, you're correct?
No, no.
A half feet wide.
Yeah.
It's 12 feet, almost that big.
I'm saying to have the driveway, if you put it on the other side of the driveway, in other words, instead of being like there, if I'm looking for it and I'm coming up from the west, I'm gonna see it better if it's on the right side of your driveway as we're looking at it now than on the left, aren't I? I mean, aren't you, aren't you, isn't, aren't most of your customers coming up from the left?
Yes, which is why we put the sign before the driveway. So we can see the sign and then see the driveway, but...
Because it's too late by the time you...
If it's on the other side of the driveway, you've gone by it before you've gotten the sign. If you ask me, isn't that helpful, but...
Off the subject, I have to get to work before I get home. How do I find out any results or any information on this if I'm not here?
You've got your name and contact information.
Yes, so you're gonna say something else? Okay, thank you for your time. Excuse me.
Yep.
Separate fire.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Do we know what kind of restaurant it is, as anyone ever said?
Nope, not yet. That's not, is that a requirement, the 250? All right, then, yeah, no. I don't know yet.
Still working on it.
Still working on it.
Pizza place.
No, it won't be a pizza place. It's gonna be a restaurant that is able to provide meals to the conference center. It's not gonna be a pizza joint or a fast food restaurant or anything.
They told me the way it is. I wonder five years from now if you're gonna have enough customers to fill all these spaces.
Depends how good the food is, right?
No.
No, no, no. Vermont Restaurant, and that name, you've pretty much gotta do food to table, don't you, so?
It will be, yeah.
But from a kitchen design, it's gotta be able to accommodate both.
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to bring up that, I don't know how I totally feel about it. But anyhow, I was just curious about that, if you thought about that. Now, we're gonna go to water. And maybe the engineers, they can explain the situation of that. Now, the basic, I can't get on my internet, I'll guess I can, while you do this. But the criteria says we'll not unreasonably burden any existing water supply. So how do you prove that for these folks who live a mile away?
So right now, and we've been in this process for quite a while, we are working our way through the source permitting process with the state drinking water and groundwater protection provision. We're required to go through this permitting process because of the level of this proposed hotel and conference center will classify the onsite water system as a public water system. Even though it's privately owned, it's regulated like it's a public water system. So for the source permitting process, what we've done so far is we're working with a professional hydrogeologist who cited the wells at favorable location based on bedrock fracture analysis. And so that analysis and the proposed well location is sent to the state for review. They reviewed it, approved the location. We drilled the first well. Unfortunately, the first well didn't have the kind of yield we needed for the project. So we put in another application to drill another well. Same information, sent it to the state, got it approved, drilled the second well. And so the second well has had a short-term drillers yield test performed that gives an estimate of its capacity at 150 gallons a minute. Frankly, 150 gallons a minute could probably supply most of the time frame of water. It's a lot of water. But based on calculations of the water use, using the daily usage estimation, estimates that are published in the state water supply rules, we're looking at about 19,000 gallons a day of water use or 26-ish gallons a minute of pumping out of the well, which roughly has the capacity for 150 gallons a minute. So based on that, the next step, and we've just gotten approval from the state to do this, is we do a long-term pumping test to determine the safe yield of the well. And what that means is that based on the amount of water use that we have, the state in the water supply rules has designated a certain radius around the well, which is the area that the well may potentially be affecting other wells, drawing water out of the same aquifer as the well that we proposed. So based on our proposed uses, that monitoring radius is 2,000 feet. So our hydrogeologist has identified all of the wells within that 2,000-foot radius. And we've just sent out letters to all of the owners of the wells within that radius, asking permission to monitor their wells during the pump test. So everyone who gives us permission, we will go to their property, open up their well, put a water level monitoring device in their well. We'll monitor the background level of the groundwater, both at the project well and then at all of the wells that we have permission to monitor within 2,000-foot radius for a week or so to see what the existing situation with the aquifer is like. And then we'll perform a test where we pump out of the well at a constant rate for 72 hours, so three days straight. And then during that, we'll be logging both the water level in the well and the water level in any of the wells that we have permission to monitor within the monitoring radius. So that test, the intention of the test is to both assure us and the state and everyone else that if we are, so that's pumping at the, like, the maximum amount we'd expect to pump from the well. You, the way you calculate that is taking your, as if you use your whole day's water and you pump it out in 12 hours. So we're gonna take that rate of one day over 12 hours and do it for three days straight and see how much, where the water level ends up in the well. So we have to show that that isn't going to, that the well can provide enough water without de-water and to satisfy that demand, which is beyond what we expect to be doing normally in the well. And then we also have to show that there is no significant or detrimental interference with the water level in the wells and the monitoring radius. So the hydrogeologists will look at that data, you know. And so because we're pumping at like one-fifth of the well's estimated capacity, we're not really anticipating that there's going to be any significant interference at all. If we do find that there's interference with those wells, then we're required by the state law to mitigate that. Whether that's, you know, drilling another well into a different aquifer, so we have two sources, whether that's providing additional sources of water to the people that are affected or things like that. There's, we have to go changing the rate of withdrawing water. Somehow, we have to fix it. But we're not, again, we're not expecting that there's gonna be any significant interference. So at the conclusion of that test, the hydrogeologists will write a report including any remedies, as well as a source protection plan, and submit it to the state hydrogeologist for review. So all in all, if we will see what the effect of the well is and how far that goes during this pump test, you know, it's very unlikely that it'll be anywhere outside of this 2,000-foot influence radius and certainly not anyone up on the top of the hill or the Randolph Center Fire District, which has a well, the well at VTC feeds into the Randolph Center Fire District, as well as they have a spring feeding the fire district up there. So, you know, there's certainly quite a lot more water withdrawal at the top of the hill, much closer to anyone who's in Randolph Center and not on the fire district's water system than our project would have. So we're certainly more than happy to submit the testing result report to the state. We're also going to have to be submitting the approved source permit as well as the approved construction permits for the public water system to you guys before we'll be issuing the act 250 permit.
So with that much GPM, you'd never clear the charge?
I mean, that's the hope. It's a little, the reason why you have to do the longer test is sometimes, sometimes there's things that might affect the well capacity. You don't see a short test in the way a well drill would usually do it. A well drill would pump it for like an hour or two. You may see something different when you pump it for three days, but that's why you have to do it for so long. So you have a very robust test of the well to make sure that it will provide the capacity that is needed to serve the project over a long period of time.
What's the pump capacity that you're proposing putting down there?
Well, it's gonna, it's gonna be around that, let me think about it first.
It's three quarters, wasn't it?
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think we're gonna be required to put a pump that would be able to meet it over 12 hours, but we wouldn't put it more than that. So it'll be at that 26, it'll be around the pump test rate, the well capacity. But it won't be designed to pump all the time. You know what I mean? So in this test, we're pumping continuously for three days. And we would expect that at most, you would pump 12 hours at that rate each day. So you have 12 hours, half the day for the well to recover and aquifer to recover before you start. In reality, it'll be like in smaller chunks more often. But we are also providing a portable water storage tank here. So that'll both is for coronation, disinfection purposes, but it also makes it so you're not pumping out of the well as often to serve the demand. So you have, you store a bunch of water in this tank, you use it up slowly as the day goes by, and the well pump is only turned on when you need to refill it.
Well, as shallow as that well is, you don't have very much stack, not much storage right there.
Right.
You have capacity.
Yeah.
Eat it anyway.
Right, right. So, but we will have, we'll have additional storage anyway.
If you get a permit from that, you alluded to a couple of different things. Do we get a rebuttable presumption out of this or from this?
Yeah, yeah.
What's the permit again?
There'll be two of them at least for the water system. There'll be the source permit, which permits, which is what the process is running right now, which is the permit that says, yes, this well has the capacity to serve the demands that you want to place on it. Then there's the construction permit, which will review the storage, distribution, and treatment of the water system to make sure that's complying with public water system regulations. And then there's the wastewater permit, but because we're a public water system, the wastewater permit won't, they don't have any jurisdiction over the water system. It'll just be like an issue to the...
What part of that, though, should comply with our three that you're on?
It would be the source permit and the construction source permit, yeah.
We did get the allocation from the town on the sewer.
Yeah, we understood that. That sounds reasonably expensive, which would...
It's very expensive, yeah.
Yeah, it is very expensive.
I mean, it's a very robust test, and it's the same level of testing that if Randolph, if the town of Randolph wanted to build a new municipal water system, they would do the same test that we're doing for this hotel. It's robust, for sure.
Does that allay any of your fears or concerns?
Well, here's the thing. Supposing it doesn't work. There was a situation about 25 years ago where there was a development outside of Burlington, I think it was in Williston. And then there was a development next to them, near them, and the first development lost its water. So it, the aquifer of Randolph has not been mapped. They have been mapping bit by bit, town by town, aquifers throughout the state. Randolph never requested it, even though we asked Randolph to do so. So Randolph doesn't have its aquifers mapped. We don't know, the 2,000 feet, we don't know what size of the aquifer is in Randolph. Furthermore, aquifers in Vermont are shallow and small. There are a series of small ones. It's not like in the Midwest or the West weather, which they have this huge thing that runs for thousands of miles, which they are, by the way, with the pumping. We have a lot of smaller ones. So if they start to pump this and it pumps for more than three days, it pumps for a while, what is the renewal of the aquifer? Because you've got a whole 25 acres of macadam and, you know, non-porous item, non-porous surfaces. So the water is gonna come there, drain off, go down to the sewer system, go down to the Randolph Treatment Center, go out to the Connecticut Valley. It is not going to replenish the water system here. Whereas people with wells and...
So you're telling me you're criticizing the tests that are required by the state to do?
I know, I'm saying, if the test is wrong, and it can be wrong, it has been wrong in other situations. They did that test in Williston, and then they did that test in the next development. They had to. And the test proved fine until people moved in, used the water, and the other...
So what more would you like them to do?
I would like to have some kind of, some sort of way of, if my well goes dry, that someone's gonna drill me a new well and restore my water.
Well, the state's requiring 2,000 feet, how far away are you?
I'm about 5,000 feet.
How many feet did you say they drilled before they hit bedrock?
I wanna say like 30.
It was 30 because we had to do 50 feet of casing.
Right.
We had to do extra casing.
As soon as you hit bedrock, which is...
But you still had to do the 50 feet, we were required.
It's not on the Atlas yet.
What, this well?
Yeah.
No, I doubt it.
So, I mean, I just wanna be protected if I lose my water.
How many wells, you said you're gonna monitor, wells within a radius?
There's, I think there's about eight inside the radius. We may not monitor them all, because we may not get permission to monitor them all. But there's certainly a few that are very close to the project that we'll be monitors. One of them is Perry Armstrong, one of the partners of the project. Is one of the abiding landowners, so we're certainly monitoring his well. We were just discussing with Mr. Shabat at the break, that he's received his letter. And he verbally expressed to us that he signed it and will send it back as soon as possible if he's interested in making sure that his water supply. So those water supplies are gonna be significantly closer than 2,000 feet to the project. So if the test is gonna show any effect on water supplies, it will show it at these wells. And the effect at these wells would be much greater than the effect, any effect at further away well. I mean, I could go into the science if you want to.
No, it's just a curiosity question, how many were within that radius?
Sure, it's around, it's not, I mean, there's not a ton of them in there, but it's around it.
It does take in McDonald's and The Barn, right?
No, it takes in the old Vermont Pure building and then actually even a couple of the houses that are on that road that comes down from the center, like behind Vermont Pure, you know those?
Oh, yes.
Up on the knob there.
Yep.
Does it get it up as far as Apple, what did you call that? And you proved up a different...
Oh, Morgan Leach? They're on the, they're on the Randolph Fire District.
Oh, yeah.
Randolph Center.
Yeah, that's right. And again, I would say, you know, if anyone loses their water up in Randolph Center, it's far more likely it's because of the fire district than it is because of our project. Because they're pumping out of the well and a spring up there at the top of the hill. And relative to the comments about groundwater recharge, the soils here are 60% or more salt soils. So, and we have clear evidence that the aquifer that we're pumping out of isn't connected to the surface, the surface aquifer at this location. If it were, we wouldn't have an artesian well. The height of the water in the well would be at the height of the groundwater when you dug down from the ground. So if you have water that's coming up higher than the ground, it's coming from a source that is separated from the water that's filtering into the rainwater. So while I can't tell you exactly what's feeding the aquifer, it's not, it's not water. It's infiltrating from rainwater on the site. Between the high, the very low permeability salt soils and the confined aquifer that we're dealing with.
So I'm just gonna pick a geologist.
I've at least studied hydrogeology. I'm not a hydrogeologist. I've at least studied hydrogeology, I'm not a hydrogeologist, I never studied light design or traffic.
Yes.
So, it, I'm just curious how the radius was determined, a thousand or two thousand feet, and, um, and I would follow up to that.
Environmental protection rules.
So, given, uh, assuming that the aquifer has not been mapped, um, would be an undue burden if, for example, Ms. Sacks and Ms. Rice were willing to sign off that their wells could be tested for quantity and quality purposes, um, despite the fact that they're outside of that radius? Would that be an onerous burden to ensure that their concerns are, um, would be addressed if in fact there was an impairment to their, um, their flow or quality of their, of their water?
I think, I, I think the, the first question I'd have on that would be being able to show cause. I mean, what, if, if the project goes ahead and then something hopefully not ever happens to one of the wells, how do you link them?
Well, that's for the scientists to determine, I guess.
Well.
But it seems like if, if there is a level of confidence that they're too far outside, um, the distance by which they would be impacted, um, then there shouldn't, I don't know what the objection would be.
The objection would be, because clearly, there could be dozens of other reasons for a well to go dry that have nothing to do with the project.
Beyond the fact that if we start opening up the radius to people who are outside of the, the area that's required by state regulations, what's to stop someone else coming along and asking for their well to be tested too, and then we end up testing every single well in Randolph Center?
Cause you're not here today, that's what prevents you, protects you from something.
No, well, I think we have to, there's been, um, within Act two fifty, rightly or wrongly, under some of these more scientific, um, criteria, rebuttable presumptions placed here. Um, what that means is if, if they get a pass or, you know, do the testing that's required, um, from the agency of natural resources or whatever agencies are involved, then as to Act two fifty, there's a rebuttable presumption that they comply with that criteria. And, um, I, I, you know, as a layperson with respect to this, I don't feel that I, you know, I need to stay within what, what is presented to us and what is required of us relative to the existing law at this point.
I, I can appreciate that, and I'm just kinda curious why you're asking whether that allays our, our fears? What, what would it matter, or why you asking?
I just, I'm asking if, you know, he gave quite a lengthy explanation, which you missed most of, which involves the, it's rather expensive and time-consuming, um,
I recall.
What they're gonna do, where they pump the well for, what, seventy-two hours, I recall, and at above maximum capacity of what you will be requiring, be pumping out and, uh, and for what your needs are. And that within two thousand feet, there'll be wells which presumably will be at greater risk than these wells, will be monitored if they get permission to them, and, uh, it sounds like a pretty good, uh, and competent way to go about it. And so I thought it might have allayed their fears, that if those wells don't pump down and don't have a problem, that there's two would not have a problem.
Well, the, the problem is the variables in terms of what the, the particular wells will be tested, what their, um, historical flows have been versus someone who may not have such a robust number per gallon. So, uh, it just doesn't seem like it's that big of a deal if they're gonna do the pump testing anyway, which is a protocol I'm well familiar with. Um, it seems like it would not be so onerous, um, to monitor two other wells.
Well, we will take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we've covered everything. So. So, what, we'll, you know, before we recess, um, just to go over what happens next, who's probably familiar, we'll be issuing a recess memo. Some of what we discussed will definitely be in that recess memo, and, uh, we may or may not reconvene again if we feel we need to. Um, but otherwise, it'll be an opportunity for all the parties to, um, respond and, uh, give and take back and forth by email and mail, if I can, yes.
Um, I'm sorry, since I did have to absent myself for the majority of the hearing, I was, um, just wanted to know what your decision, at least a provisional decision on the act of support of the state.
We created, uh, exit for preliminary party status on, um, criteria's three, five and eight.
And have you deemed, um, that the two members that are present have adequately participated during the hearing in order to be able to maintain that from a participation stance?
Oh, from a participation standpoint, certainly, I would say, I'm gonna just speak in for that, but they've certainly participated. Okay, well, thank you for all coming, we'll stage recess.
You've been sharing your time, thank you.